Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone here in the audience and those who are watching us on TV tonight to the regular Planning Commission of the city of Muskegon. I'd like to let you know that a lot of the business that we do in the Planning Commission is done in public hearings. We have two public hearings today, which is the main part of our business. When we have a public hearing, I'll announce the public hearing. Staff will give an explanation of the hearing. Commissioners will then have the opportunity to ask questions of city staff. Once that's done, we'll invite the person making the request to come to the podium, give their name and address, and explain what their request is about. Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions of that individual. When they are done asking questions, it'll be open to the audience. Raise your hand, and I'll try and recognize you in the order that you raise your hand. You need to come to the podium, give your name and address for the records, and then you can say your speech. When everybody has had a chance to talk, if there's something that hasn't been brought up before that people would like to bring up, I'll give you a second opportunity, but please make those brief. Okay, so we're ready to start. Roll call, please.
Ken Johnson.
Here.
Eric Hood. Jonathan Seifert.
Here.
Justin Keaner. Joe Doyle.
Here.
Brian Muzade.
Here.
Jill Montgomery Keast.
Here.
Larry Spataro.
Here.
Tim Mikowski.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on December 15th.
Move to approve?
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve the minutes. Are there any changes? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same? Motion passes. Next, we come to elections. We'll be electing a chair and a vice chair, and we'll start with nominations for the chairmanship. Yes, Commissioner Muzade?
I'd make a motion that Tim Mikowski be the chair for this year.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to retain me as the chair. Is there any other nominations?
No nominations, but just to give some context, the commission met as a community relations committee meeting earlier this week to make a recommendation to ourselves of who to appoint or reappoint to this body, so I just wanted to let everyone know that the CRC has made a recommendation that's forthcoming to be finalized by the city commission to reappoint Brian Muzade and Larry Spataro to the planning commission. So you know who is going to be on the planning commission for this next cycle.
Okay.
Do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
That would be a good question.
Okay, seeing no other nominations? We need to have a roll call vote.
We should, yep.
Yes.
Jonathan Seifert?
Yes.
Joe Doyle?
Yes.
Brian Muzade?
Yes.
Jill Montgomery Keast?
Yes.
Larry Spataro?
Yes.
Ken Johnson?
Yes.
Tim Mikowski?
Yes. Next, we go to a vice chair. Need nominations for vice chair. Commissioner Muzade?
I'd make a motion that Joe Doyle be the vice chair for this year.
Support.
It's removed and supported. Joe Doyle retained the vice chairmanship. Any other nominations? Seeing none, roll call.
Brian Muzade?
Yes.
Jill Montgomery Keast?
Yes.
Larry Spataro?
Yes.
Ken Johnson?
Yes.
Jonathan Seifert?
Yes.
Joe Doyle?
Sure.
Tim Mikowski?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
I'm gonna turn in my resignation. All right, next item on the agenda is old business. Do we have any old business that needs to be brought up? Okay, now we'll go to our public hearings, and we'll start with hearing case 2023-01.
This is a request to amend the PUD at Hartshorn Village by Harbor West LLC. The original PUD was approved in February of 2019 and included 55 detached homes. It was amended again in March of 2022 to remove the 17 homes on the west side of the development and to develop a 17-unit condo building. We're here again to amend the PUD. These changes include a reduction of homes, of the single-family homes down to 20. This will also keep the access drive east of Friconos to the Hartshorn launch. There is a proposed gate there that would be only used when boats are being launched from that facility. That boat launch facility where the condo was to be is about 62,000 square foot and 45-foot tall. It'll be for boat storage that will use the Hartshorn, existing Hartshorn launch, as well as being open to the public. There will be a forklift crossing path that goes to the existing launch, and also includes an alternative path for the bike path around that proposed facility so that it will remain open when operations are not running, but when a boat does have to cross, they propose on shutting that down and have people blocking that off, and there will be an alternate route behind that building. And also, the other change is the existing parking lot that is at Friconos place that was initially proposed to be green space, and additional parking would have been behind that condo building farther to the west. They're proposing not to build that and to keep the existing parking in place. We did notice everybody within 300 feet, and we do have some, two comments from the public. If you could pass these down. Roberta King is opposed to the development, mostly for bike path access issues. And we had another comment from Sheila Mollenkamp, who is not necessarily opposed, but does have some concerns to think about if this development was to go through, mostly safety of bikers and pedestrians, the aesthetics of any changes, and a near for clear signage for the trail.
Okay, any questions to staff commissioners?
Just for clarification, because, you know, since we don't get the big printouts anymore, I just gotta make sure I'm reading correctly what was sent to me. Because even on my computer screen, it's still pretty teeny tiny. If I'm understanding this correctly, there is essentially going to be a 62,000-square-foot pole barn for boat storage. And when it's in use and boats are going to be launched, the existing bike path will be blocked from use, and a bypass on the landward side of that building will be what is expected for pedestrians and bikers to use?
That's correct.
Okay.
I would also like to just add, from the staff recommendation, we were able to meet with the developer and talk some things through. Most of the comments from the engineering department were related to stormwater. These are some serious changes, so they just wanted to make sure that the developer was aware that that stormwater permit would have to be updated and want a little confirmation that that would be feasible. They have talked through it and seen some of the utilities plans, and the engineering department feels that that will be feasible, but the only stipulation is that they need to amend that stormwater permit. Also, the concrete, they would like to see 10-inch concrete to be installed where the forklift will operate. So we had mentioned some improvements to the parking lot. That's not the entire parking lot, but only where the forklift would operate. We would like to reinforce that with 10-inch concrete. And we did talk about the bike path. It's not mentioned in there that it would be elevated. It says to remain. However, we have talked with the developer. He is willing to elevate that bike path over the wetlands, so we won't have any issues when it comes to flooding, so that would be amended. Also, there was a note about a future community pool, the community room and the pool, which was discussed for possible relocation, but it still showed the existing one, so that's to be removed from the plan. We're not having any discussions right now on moving that building.
And one follow-up question, so thank you for the clarification. Since apparently this hadn't happened earlier with the Adelaide Point proposals, and I didn't realize that or I would have asked back then, but what's the Waterways Commission position on using the Hartshorn Marina for a commercial operation?
Yeah, I think I'd like to let the developer talk about some of their findings, and that'll be discussed actually in the next PUD about why that one wouldn't be accessed, but it's germane to this as well. So maybe if the developer could give a little bit of an explanation on his findings.
Well, I mean, have we heard from the Waterways Commission?
I personally have not. I think the developer has some more information on that.
Commissioner Spataro, I'm not sure the state has any interest in this. I've been calling regularly for the last three months to the individual in charge of this particular operation, and she has not returned a single phone call to me in three months.
Well, that's information that's pertinent, so thank you.
Any other questions?
That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
You mentioned about the boat launch ramp. That's not gonna be open, that's not gonna be a public area anymore?
No, it will be open to the public as well.
So...
It'll be a public boat launch.
This doesn't have to be, you don't have to be just launching a boat to go down there?
It's open to the public. You can launch a boat there, or you can just go to fish, or...
So it's basically the same as it was before?
Yes.
Okay, is there going to be a gate from the village to the marina? A separate gate?
The gate goes from where the public parking is on the east side that exists, that is just north of Friconos parking lot, to where the forklift will go and launch boats out. If we could pull up that site plan?
That would be good.
So where?
That's the one.
This one?
Yep. Scroll down a little bit. So if you see where the building is highlighted, there's the concrete drive next to it.
Yep.
That's where it's gonna cross over, and the proposed gate is right there.
Okay, I see it.
Okay, I guess that's the old launch ramp?
That's the existing launch ramp, yes.
When this proposal first came to us with the original developer, there was an agreement with the city regarding use of slips in Hartshorn Marina. I've never seen the agreement. I'd like to know how many slips are committed to Hartshorn Village.
You would like to see that agreement, or... Are you looking for an explanation of how we're...
Looking for a number.
Okay.
We've asked our attorney to give an opinion on that. We haven't gotten that opinion back yet to go through that agreement and figure out what the, is it an actual number, or is it related to the number of units that are there, which I think was the question at hand before? So that's still in process.
And the developer of Hartshorn Marina is also now manager of the marina?
Yep.
So he's in charge, he's in charge of who gets the slips, and he has a bunch of slips that he wants? Okay. Thank you. I guess that's all the questions I have.
I don't know, Mike, if you got into it with the developer, but as far as the use of this gate that's gonna block off the boat launch ramp, is that, what's the process?
That is only gonna be operational when a boat is being launched, so it'll be open for people to freely move in between there when it's not in use. And I'd also like to point out that when the public is going to be launching boats at the marina, they'll be encouraged to go down Adelaide Boulevard, not to where they currently take that access drive. So they, if you're launching a boat, you're not gonna hit that gate, but I suppose that's another topic of discussion is, does that need to have a gate there as well?
Any other questions, commissioners?
So Adelaide, just to clarify, Adelaide Boulevard is that street that's going in. It's noted on this plan, but it's a little duller because it's actually part of the other PUD, but it's the street that'll be going in just west of that proposed boat storage building and connect to Western Avenue.
Okay. Anyone else? Last chance? Okay, with the person requesting this hearing, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and explain what you're doing. Is there somebody here from the development?
Hi, how are you? Sorry about that. I thought it was time for public comment. So, yes, as everybody knows, my wife and I have been working on Adelaide Point for quite some time. Slow would probably be a fast way of describing how things have been going, but it's been a huge effort. One of the biggest reasons it went slow is because of working with Eagle. Not terribly quick process to go through everything with them. The biggest issue that we ran into with Eagle is that they do not want us to put a forklift drop or a ramp in the east basin. Why was that originally there? We had to have that forklift drop and that ramp to conduct our commercial business operations, right? Once we develop Adelaide Point, we no longer will be able to operate that business, right? So we don't wanna basically kill one business in order to start up another. It's not, you know, prudent whatsoever. So our original design had that there, but for various different reasons. Eagle did not want us to touch that. One of them was they didn't want us to make the impact to the wetlands. We would have to dredge it out and widen it so that we could turn boats around for the forklift and for the ramp. They also didn't want us touching what was underneath. At the time that we put in that design queue, we didn't realize how bad it is down at the bottom. The Hartshorn Foundry used that specific location to dump all their nastiest stuff. It's got chromium, it's got cadmium, it's got arsenic in it. It's beyond bad, right? So disturbing that was obviously not a great idea. So what do you do, right? We didn't want to, well, and they came to us and said, "We want you to use the ramp and the forklift drop that's over here." Right, so and they basically directed us to use what was already there. They said, "It's certainly feasible, but it's much more prudent to use a facility that's already there." So there was a question about Waterways Council, because some people have said, "Oh, well, company can't operate there. Just it's not possible. You can't mix private citizenry and commercial interests." So I called Dan Lord over at Waterways, and he's in charge of all the grants, and he basically said, "There is no restriction on that." So he did a little bit of homework to make sure that first it was legal. And then we still had the issue of now we have to go even farther in order to use the Hartshorn facilities that are there, and that created more congestion and traffic issues, and it's, you know, more dangerous. It really wasn't that great. So in talking with Sid, who was the owner of Hartshorn, my wife was working on how we were gonna share the roads and utilities, and he just happened to say, "Well, why don't you just buy me?" And she told me, and it ended up being perfect timing for the issue that we had, which was, "How do we protect our commercial business and keep that operating, you know, and still develop Adelaide Point?" Well, that development gave us the opportunity to purchase not only that area with all the homes that are there, but also the two additional parcels that had been optioned from Mr. Fricono. So basically, we looked at it and said, "Well, now this is actually a way where it can be better for everybody." That western parcel is a location where it'd allow us to operate our forklift business, and this is effectively how the traffic pattern would work, right? So if you're looking at the Hartshorn Municipal Trailer Ramp, and this is the ramp, and this is the forklift drop, without the Hartshorn development, we would have to cross over from Adelaide Boulevard and go all the way through that parking area where there's boats and trailers to get over there, not just in the fall and in the spring when we're launching our big boats, but also with all the smaller boats that we would be putting in every weekend, all throughout the summer. So there's a lot of congestion and traffic that goes through there, and it frankly isn't safe. I mean, us being there all the time, there's young kids that are on the bike path, there's people of all ages. You know, I saw a guy who almost hit a two-year-old on a scooter riding an electric bike going 30 miles an hour, right? So we don't wanna congest things if we don't have to. With the new setup, we would still be crossing over from Adelaide Point for our big boats, but only in the spring and only in the fall, and really only during normal business hours, which isn't when most people are using those recreational facilities. On the east side of that trailer ramp, you'll see that that's where the forklift drop is, and if you go straight south, that's where that proposed boat is at. The reason that the gate is in there is because with our new plan in conjunction with Adelaide Point, instead of having trailers come in on the east side of Ted's building, drive all the way through the access road and then go into the municipal trailer area, there'll be direct access from Adelaide Boulevard where there won't be creating trailer congestion, right? They'll have their own dedicated entrance, and we're able to divide effectively trailers and boats from general car and neighborhood traffic. Cars and people on bikes or whatever will still be able to come in on the existing drive and park where they parked today, and that was a huge hot-button issue, which as soon as, you know, we bought Hartshorn, I canceled the Eagle permit for the bike path because everybody was up in arms about how people would no longer be able to go fishing there, and it wasn't something I considered worthwhile to pursue. But anybody that is currently going there to fish in wheelchairs that's disabled, if they have medical conditions, that will still remain. So putting some sort of a barrier here effectively allows us to ensure that our forklift traffic is at a dead end, where we won't have to worry about cars or vehicles or trailers or things like that. We're only using about space that's about 30 feet wide and maybe about 40 feet long directly on the water, but other than that, we're using our own property. The bike path, I don't think there's anything more controversial in Muskegon than the bike path. It's very important to people, understandably so. The access is incredibly important. With the old setup, before we found out Eagle wanted us to use the city facilities, our forklift had to cross over a bike path all summer long and cross over an active roadway, right? So that would have resulted in two, three dozen crossings a day, right? Which is much more disruptive to both bike path users and to vehicular traffic. Whereas in this new setup, we are crossing a bike path, not a vehicular roadway. We are crossing a bike path, but we have put in a bike path bypass to ensure that anybody that is on the bike path is not going to be inconvenienced by our summer operation when we're putting boats in the water. Those summer operation activities will generally take place between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Because people will call in or use an app. "I want my boat put in the water." It gets all queued up. Somebody shows up, and they just put boats in the water one after another until they're all tied up on the dock. They show up, they run around on the lake, they come back, everybody ties their boats up on the dock, and generally between like 4:00 and 7:00 p.m., there is a continual stream of operations where it's pluck in place, pluck in place, and pluck in place. So there will be a few hours in the morning where the bypass will be necessary. There will be a few hours in the late afternoon where the bypass will be necessary. Despite the fact that there is a bypass, there's going to be one forklift operator who'll be behind the wheel. There's a camera that's placed inside of the forks that looks down. There's a camera that's placed behind, and there will be a physical, real person that will be standing there spotting the forklift to make sure that nobody is sneaking up from behind or what have you, right? Safety is the absolutely most important thing. So net-net, when you look at all the changes that we're making, we're not crossing an active bike path as much. We're not crossing an active roadway as much instead of putting $4 million into a forklift investment in the east basin, which could, you know, potentially pull out three-eyed fish with everything that's in the bottom. We're making an investment in a facility that will bring in hundreds of customers, help Mr. Fricono sell tons and tons of pizzas, bottles of wine, et cetera. We have a great relationship. We've talked about just using the parking lot that's there. We've talked about just using the parking lot that's there for now. We don't have any really long-range plans on what we're going to do with the rest of Hartshorn. We do plan on putting in lots for the rest of that strip. Kind of the interior there, we'll just kind of see what happens. Our primary objective at this point is to ensure that Adelaide Point can move its commercial storage operation somewhere so that we can start tearing up the north campus. If we cannot do that, it is a huge impediment to this development because it just doesn't make any sense to kill a business to speculate on a new one. So, we think that this is a great way to balance the interests of the public, the interests of our development, the interests of our customers, and yeah, appreciate your consideration.
Questions, Commissioners? Yes.
How... You're talking about the in-and-out storage for that building. How many boats are you planning on holding in that building? What's the potential?
300.
300? Okay, thanks.
With that in-and-out storage and service, are you planning to add any boat slips someplace? You said you're going to... They're going to be tied off, but right now, there's not any slips in that area. Are you planning to add any?
So, what our plan is, is that we're going to put in some long docks. You can see one of them that's in our central basin right now. And my kind of thought was, is that we would use that for, you know, not only staging the boats, but it could also serve a dual purpose as like a shopper dock, so that if people did want to come in from the lake, they'd be able to tie up there and be a little bit closer to downtown. I haven't totally flushed that out, but that's kind of what I'm thinking.
It seems like our two publicarians are kind of running into each other. Of course, they are related. So, you... When you bought the Hartshorn Village, you must have read the agreement that was in place for use of the Marina?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you tell me how many slips you were committed?
Um, I don't know offhand. I think there's like 24 or 26 or something like that's in the agreement. The purpose behind that was, is obviously if somebody's going to want to buy a home there, they want to make sure that they're going to be able to have a slip so they can put their boat there. I mean, it's like the big attraction to buying a home there. There's a little bit of a waiting list right now. I think that has been exacerbated by the fact that that middle dock kind of blew out. But yeah, that's... I think that was the purpose behind it. Hopefully, we get, you know, docked back in there at some point.
I'm not real happy with this plan. You've talked about at least a dozen inconveniences to your business and how you were going to resolve them. And in my opinion, every one of those was resolved in your favor at the detriment of the public. I was one of the original Commissioners that fought to get that bike path in, a lakeshore bike path. And now, it's being moved off the lake and being inconvenienced by your development. Why can't there be some compromise where you compromise your plan for the benefit of the citizens?
Well, I don't know how to move boats from the land side to the water side without crossing a bike path. There's no way to do that. It has to happen somewhere. It either happens in the central basin, or it has to happen over at this facility. Eagle would not allow me to put in something else. Now, in terms of the bike path, our plan has over two miles, a new bike path that I'm going to be paying for and installing once Adelaide Point moves forward. My wife and I are both avid cyclists.
Will that be on the lakeshore?
Yeah, it's going to be all over. It's going to... So, I... On my property, I have two peninsulas, right? Which our agreement with the city is that we're going to work together between our public property and Hartshorn, and our 3,500 linear feet of waterfront and the three acres that are on our peninsulas are open and available to the public. That property will be stocked with new bike paths that will allow the public to go all the way up to the water, the fishing pier that we're looking at putting in. We're also looking at having that be a public facility. I did the math on it. The amount of additional linear footage of public access on walkways is going up by 8,400% with the combination of this plan and Adelaide Point. It's a massive improvement. So, while I suppose it would be... I don't have any other choice unless it kills my business. And if it kills my business, it requires a rethinking of the economics of Adelaide Point, which then requires a rethinking of all the investments we're making in public access. There is no perfect solution. It requires a measure of balance, and this is the best that we were able to come up with, with the regulatory restrictions that have been placed upon us.
Okay, I have just one last question.
Yes, sir.
Since you're both in charge of the development that has been promised 26 slips, and you are the manager of the Marina, you have two homes there right now. Are you going to reserve those 26 slips until the 26 houses are built?
Uh, no, actually, they're going to the waiting list.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's... What are we going to do with them?
All right. When are you going to open that waiting list?
Uh, now? I mean, it's basically...
And I mean, when are you going to take people off the waiting list and give them a slip?
Well, so, Kaylee is over there, and I told her with J. Ford, John Flickerman IV, who's my operations guy, to make sure that all the people that are on the waiting lists in order still want a slip. And then, just to take them in order once they confirm that they want a slip. So, same price. I mean, John's going to have a slip because he's moving there. But other than that, it's, you know, it's open to everybody.
Has he reserved his slip? Has he put his 300 dollar deposit down on him, which was required by...
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, we're getting well beyond...
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I think this is very pertinent to the development and whether this... We're going to allow this development to go forward the way it is and involve the Hartshorn Marina or not.
I don't disagree, but asking whether a particular individual's paid their deposit or not, I think is...
I'm just asking them if he followed the rules. There's a waiting list. He got a slip. How did he get a slip when nobody else can?
So, what's in the agreement? It says that we have right of first refusal. So, everybody was given ample opportunity in order to renew their slip for the upcoming season. That right of first refusal period started on November 1st. On November 1st, all the ones that were no longer available were tagged because people didn't want them, and they've been basically sitting in queue to go to the people that are on the waiting list. 100% transparent, fair, no favoritism. I mean, it doesn't do us any good. I mean, it doesn't do us any good, so...
Well, it's the same topic, if I may. Are you changing? Okay. I can understand why the Chair would have a personal interest in this because he had a slip himself, but also why this is germane because this was... This previous PUD for Harbor West and Harbor Village, or Hartshorn Village, was tied in with this Harbor West agreement with relation to the slips and how it was being managed. And by virtue of you requiring Hartshorn Village, that Harbor West agreement carried over, and that's what gave you the right to exercise management. It's not a foregone conclusion. If the city is dissatisfied with management, the city can nix that if it so chooses. The city sets the rules of the Marina still in terms of rates for it, as well as the schedule. And so, let me read to you the agreement. You wanted to know what's in the agreement itself. I pulled it up in Section 17 of that Harbor West agreement. Marina slips, right of first refusal, seller covenants being the city, and agrees that buyer shall annually have a right of first refusal for the lease of up to 23 boat slips in the Marina. Buyer shall exercise its right of first refusal for some or all of the 23 slips by November 1st of each year for the following season. If buyer fails to exercise such right by November 1st, or alternatively only exercises such right with respect to a portion of the 23 slips, then seller shall have the right thereafter to lease the remaining slips to other parties. Buyer so be permitted to record a memorandum of this right of first refusal, a form of which is attached to Exhibit D. And as my understanding from DPW, the way this is operated is that all of our... And this was very important to the Commission when this agreement was approved, that all of our pre-existing slipholders at Hartshorn Marina would get that first right of refusal. They would have the very first right of refusal to continue operating their slips inside our public Marina. And so, the way we've operated is that all of the prior slipholders had till October 31st each year to secure their slip for the subsequent year. And then, if after that time happened, then this is where this comes into play as in November 1st. Now, there's a different... Maybe a difference in your opinion or expectation into how this functions. I think I have a similar view, or you and I have a similar view in terms of when this was originally put into place, is that it would be tied to the individual houses that came online, not in totality, you are an entity Harbor West, and you get up to 23 regardless of how many houses are developed. It was my expectation with this agreement that it would be based upon the number of actual houses built. And that number of housing is changing, you know, with this beauty. So, I can understand why you're inquiring about it. But I wanted to give you that further context, as well as the folks in the audience and at home, some clarity as to how that agreement came about and how it's functioning and what we're looking to still get clarity from our attorney on to whether or not my interpretation, our interpretation of it stands, or if it's, you know, the other... The counterparty to this can get up to 23 regardless of how many houses are developed. But that is still outstanding, that legal opinion.
I don't have a problem with what your guys' interpretation is. Somebody's not living there, they shouldn't be... I mean, if somebody's living there, I get it, right? But I mean, if it's, you know, nine or... Now, if John moves there and he can't put his boat in there, he's going to hit me, right? People that live there are going to want to put their boat there, but, you know, it's like, what would be the purpose or benefit of us to take a whole block of slips and just keep them empty? And that would be dumb. That would, you know, destroy benefit available to others. So, that's not my intention at all, and your reasoning is logical and reasonable.
Commissioner Mazzata?
So, the public ramp that you're going to use, is that going to be improved in any way?
Yes, sir. So, what we're going to end up doing is we're going to be extending it. So, probably by about 80 or 100 feet. Huge improvement because A, we have... Our customers have boats, like, we have an absolute 50 that's, you know, it's 50 feet long, and on the trailer, it's about 75 feet long. It's huge, right? That ramp right now cannot accommodate triple axle trailers. Can't do it now. Once we do that, it will. So, now, there's a huge facility. So, there's probably going to be like more outer limits and, you know, fountain boats that are coming there to drop their boat in, right? But it will be upgraded from just a very basic, simple ramp to something that's able to accommodate, you know, very large, you know, boats, whether they're pulling it with their own 3,500 truck on the weekends or... And during the spring and in the fall when we pull our customers' boats out. But the reason... I don't think it conflicts at all because people are generally boating on the weekends, and we're doing our work during the day, so...
So, the in-and-out that's up to 50 feet, you can do an in-and-out 50 feet? And then, you're talking about launching boats that go seasonal? So, you've got that spring to fall? How large are those puppies going to be?
Puppies? Good, I like that word. Well, some of the puppies are big. They're 60 feet, 65 feet, 70 feet.
Sail?
Can be, yes, can be. Sail power. The way that Adelaide Point and Harbor West, the investments are kind of synced up is that with the redesigned Marina plan that Eagle had us put together, if you're over 40 feet, you probably belong in a wet slip at Adelaide Point. If you're under 40 feet, you probably belong in a dry stag building where you're getting forklifted in and out. There's a few slots for go-fast boats because there's some small cylinder go-fast boats that are like, you know, really long, but they're not that heavy, and they don't like keeping their boats in the water. So, we've got accommodation for a few of those. But generally, it's... If it's under 40, you're in the rack. If it's over 40, you're in the water, so... But they're designed to sync with each other to create one cohesive experience that goes across the whole waterfront there. I mean, it's almost a mile. It's over a mile between the municipal all the way over to the Western property line. And maintaining a cohesive experience across the whole thing, I think, is important for people to enjoy their experience on the water.
Questions, Commissioner?
Thank you. I know that you've recently acquired this property, and this was not your original site plan, that you're doing a modification of something that you inherited when you purchased the property. But there's a lot of issues with this over and above who has a slip in the Marina. And, you know, I'd like to address some of the other ones. One, there is zero Western Avenue presence at all on this site plan. In fact, we have a berm with dead trees on it, basically from Division Street to Franklin Street. And, you know, it just... It is not a very welcoming way to integrate a community into the NIMs neighborhood. And this is an extension of the NIMs neighborhood. The pre-existing, and again, you were not involved in that design, I'm not putting that at your feet, but it's an observation and things that need to be done to make this function better for all stakeholders. The public access to the public waterfront was removed, but never replaced. And Adelaide Boulevard will solve a chunk of that. But again, on the west side of this property, basically, the access from Western Avenue, so people who are in the existing part of NIMs neighborhood who want to access the water via foot or by bicycle, you know, we've got to get out of our mindset that everybody is driving in from somewhere else and parking their car. This is a neighborhood. There's a lot of people who are going to walk to this, and there's virtually no accommodation to accommodate those folks in the existing site plan. Again, Adelaide Boulevard does address a lot of that problem, particularly with the sidewalk that was approved in that site plan, which we're looking at later. So, those are a couple of the observations. A question for you is, since this is an existing business, and I remember when your predecessor of that property kind of wildcatted and started trailering boats over the bike path, and we had to resolve that after the fact. I believe the manager recalls that discussion quite well. That has not, up to this point, required blocking the bike path. What makes this different? That here, now, we need to block off the bike path to do what you've been doing for years at your existing location, crossing the same bike path?
Okay, so, a couple of different things compound. First one is, is that there's no change in public access in our proposed PUD whatsoever. When I bought the property with my wife, there were people going crazy about the bike path moving, and I just walked away from it, right?
Right.
Trying to avoid controversy. So, anything that you see there right now is still available. There's been no change to it. In fact, with the synchronization of Adelaide Point and Harbor West, we are currently actively improving the Hartshorn Municipal Peninsula, which has been closed to the public for years and years and years.
Well, I'm specifically asking about the proposed gate that would block off the bike path, requiring people to use the bypass in order for you to move boats to the ramp or the forklift drop. Whereas, at your current location, for essentially the same activities and same business, that's not required.
We crossed the bike path there as well.
Yes, but you don't have to block it off, or at least you don't have a gate.
Well, I guess theoretically... I mean, I don't know what the difference is. I mean, because if people... I mean, like, if we're backing in a boat on a trailer, I mean, people generally see it, or there's somebody there saying, "Go like this," right? So, I mean, it's kind of a distinction without a difference.
The difference is, is that in your current location, if you're actually moving a boat across the bike path, obviously, people stop, they see it, it's out of the way. A gate that, and let's be honest, in all practical purposes, will be shut from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And then, when you're taking boats out in the afternoon, means that for blocks of time, whether there's actually boat traffic across the bike path or not, it is no longer usable for the general public during that period of time.
I'm not interested in blocking people from getting places. I'm interested in making sure people don't get hurt. So like, if if the commission doesn't want the gate there, that's fine. I mean, it's not like a, something I'm gonna hang my hat on, it's just me just trying to making sure that people don't get hurt. So, I mean, we don't have to use a gate. We don't have a gate in the Central Basin right now. But, I mean, as Adelaide Point and Harbor West have more and more activity, as more and more people come to put their boats in the rack and they find out how great Ted's Pizza is, business is gonna explode, more people are gonna park there, the amount of traffic is gonna triple. How do you accommodate for making sure that people are kept safe? If we want a free-for-all, we can do that. We could be as careful as we can. I mean, we're gonna have somebody who's flagging and watching, but this, this isn't something I'm gonna, I'm hanging the business case on that there has to be a gate. Commission would prefer there's not a gate, no problem.
Okay. Well, and and that, that level of flexibility is very good to hear and good to know when we're making decisions. And again, you were not involved in this part of it at all, but it it, you know, I was very happy to see the fencing around the Large Boat Basin removed, and then it was replaced with a new fence. And yet, I go up and down the lakeshore on a regular basis, and municipal marinas up and down the Lake Michigan lakeshore in community after community are open to the public without fencing.
Talking about the Hartshorn Marina?
The Large Boat Basin, yes.
The Hartsh-, yeah, I mean, I don't like the fence either.
So, I I mean-
But I I kind of inherited it.
Yes, and I, and I realized a lot of the things that I'm bringing up are not things that you asked for and were granted. They were there when you bought the property. I'm just bringing them up from a planning standpoint. How can we make this more, more functional for what you wanna do, more friendly for the neighborhood, of which it's a part, and for the general public that this is their their waterfront access in that part of town?
I couldn't agree more on Hartshorn, I don't like the fence, right? So kind of the whole idea that I've always had in my brain is that people can start from downtown and they can kind of wander their way across the waterfront, and there's all kinds of activity and different uses. That was the original vision. I don't like fences, I think everybody here knows that, because as soon as I bought Adelaide Point, I tore down the fence. So, I mean, 100% open. I agree with you on the trees. Don't look great. John? We should replace the trees. I mean, there's things that we can do together to kind of make things better, and I'm totally open to it. My principal job is to, my principal job is to manage the risk of responding to the market, whether that be for condos, or slips, or widgets, or whatever. Beyond that, my primary objective as a citizen of this community and as a stewardly businessman is to make sure nobody gets hurt.
Sure.
It's or smart, don't have to be there. Trees go bad, we can rip them out. Fences are ugly, we can tear them out. And I'm 100% willing to. So I think we're all common sense people. I talk a lot.
What, one last comment or observation, and again, it'd be nice to have something that actually engaged people rather than a berman tree. So rather than just replacing trees, particularly with the city in the process of obtaining control of the railroad right away, there may be some opportunities to create a live frontage on Western Avenue for the first time in probably 100 years.
So thi- this kind of goes back into Adelaide Point. So, if things go according to plan, and we've got a lot of stuff that we're doing, and we've got about $50 million worth of investment lined up right now. But if things go according to plan, I'd like to put in another, like, boat condo, private man cave she shed building on the south campus of Adelaide Point. And then as part of that, you never heard of a she shed? As part of that project, tearing out West Western, redoing the sidewalks, bike paths, asphalt, that's all gonna be part. I I agree with you, highly walkable communities are desirable places to live.
Absolutely. So, in in that light, my last observation, and I appreciate everybody's patience, is, I understand there's not a plan at this point for Fracano's parking lot on the lake side of the building in this iteration of the plan. And this has more to do with Mr. Fracano than you, because I'm not sure who owns that, but it it's on our plan here. But even when you have events at the Fracano Center, it it's barely half used. Shrinking it in some way, even if it's just to expand green space, I think, if nothing else, it would reduce maintenance costs, because you don't have parking-
Ted and I talked about that yesterday, I mean, well, and and John was at the table with us. It's like, you know, we we don't really know exactly how all of it's gonna play out. And there's something that's dangerous about pre-conceptualizing what's gonna happen five steps ahead, right? It could be kind of a fruitless effort because things change, right? So we kind of made the, you know, commitment that we're just gonna see how it goes. We're gonna respond accordingly. Something probably has to be done with that parking lot at some point in time or another. I'm a good neighbor. I already, you know, said that I'd be totally happy to help with paying for replacement or maintenance costs or whatever. You know, we're getting rid of some bad brush over on our side, we're improving Ted's spot too. I mean, we're all about beautifying the area.
Fair enough. That's all I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you, I appreciate your-
Yeah, thank you.
So during the staff review, we we noted the gate, and that was something that was new, and we talked about it. And I was kind of thinking, or I was under the impression that we had kind of come to an agreement that we look at different alternatives there. I know this was already submitted in the packet at that point.
Yeah, that was done.
Okay, so we were looking at maybe removing that gate so that the access would still be there, but having maybe other traffic calming measures in place.
So, so thi- this is, this, listen, I'm down for whatever, right? But if you're creating a whole different entrance, if you have two entrances, one, what, what, why, why is it necessary to have them cross through, right? I mean, that's a convenience with additional risk for for really no reason. Boats and trailers can come up at Adelaide Boulevard and they can access the ramp, and cars can come up this way, there's less congestion, no matter what, everybody can get to where they wanna be. I mean, what's the purpose of having a trailer cut through that neighborhood to get to the ramp? You know, it just-
Well, just so we're talking in the right place, when I was talking, I'm talking specifically about the bike path. So nobody's gonna be trailering anything on the bike path except to cross it to get to the ramp. So I wanna make sure that we're not talking apples and oranges here, because my understanding is that the gate would block the bike path.
In the, in the park in the road.
Okay, so I'm less concerned about the parking lot than I am about the bike path.
The, the bike path, the, the way it shows on the plan, it's only blocking car access.
Yeah.
And we were, my understanding was there would be people blocking off the bike path.
Me, my decision, I would say, take a sign that shows the trailers and point them down towards Adelaide Boulevard, so that they all go up that way to access the ramp. And everybody else can come up the existing driveway that's there. It's just as convenient, it's less congestion, there's less risk of injury. And that's kind of what the design originally was. And then we would be putting our forklift at the dead end of where only the cars would go. But I mean, again, if if you guys wanna have cars go through there, that's, that's fine too. I just don't see the purpose for it, like, it doesn't produce any benefit, in my opinion. But it doesn't have to be there, I'm gonna have a guy with flags and watching anyway. It's just, it's increasing the risk for no benefit that I can perceive, but.
I just have a couple of comments. We're gonna have 300 extra boats in the building.
Yes.
Okay, so that means 300 plus extra customers, back and forth on the road. And then I appreciate Larry's idea of additional green space, but I'm wondering where all those people are gonna park.
It's a good question, we talked about that yesterday too. I mean, in general, you know, having been a dry stack customer myself, in general, you've got maybe 10% of all your customers using boats at max. So, I mean, you're talking about a total of 30 cars at max.
At any one time, you're saying?
At any one time, I mean, it's, lots of people have boats and hardly use them.
So my other question, comment, and I'm not sure if you're the right person, but you had mentioned in your initial remarks about the Hartshorn Marina center set of docks. And whose responsibility would that belong to, to restate those docks?
So, right now, it is a municipal responsibility. There's probably some sort of conversation to see how, you know, Adelaide Point and, you know, managing Hartshorn, how that can all be synced up together. No conversations have taken place, but to me, it seems like there's a natural synergy there between what we're doing and what you guys are trying to do. How does that cost get offloaded from the city?
Just see adding those, that's, those slips back takes care of some of your numbers issues, you know, for the whole project and the public, obviously, so.
I totally agree. I think, I don't know what the exact story was, but I think that when it was checked originally, it was like several million dollars to put in the new dock, and it was over budget, or, something I would wanna look at eventually, but.
Yeah. I think it ended being, vaguely remembering, I think we were anticipating it was gonna be like 1.5 to 1.75 million, something there around there, and it ended up being over $3 million for it, and we didn't have the the funding for it, and, yeah. And it would, the the T-dock had to be removed because of the the high water and electrical issues, and, you know, it was unsafe.
And then I just have one more. I just wanted to ask about stormwater.
Yeah.
Can you, where, where is the stormwater retention here on this plan? Is there, is there one? And if there's not, where are you thinking of?
The new, the new building would drain hard surfaces into the stormwater pipe. It's gonna be going past an Adelaide Boulevard.
Oh, so you would actually have it underground this way?
Yeah, so stormwater, sanitary, and water would all be connected via Adelaide Boulevard.
Okay. A lot of work has been done over there historically, and making sure that that part of the lake stays clean, so let's keep it-
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of a mess. Like, we found out yesterday that, like, that area of the bike path that always floods, it's because some pipes were installed there incorrectly. And so when the water goes up, the lake goes in, right? It just like, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. I'm, I'm not exactly sure how to correct that, that's something that we're gonna have to work with DPW on, but, you know, it's, yeah. And, you know, Ted's got his geothermal pipes going all over the place. You know, I mean, there's some stuff there that you just, you know, you gotta be careful of. But with, by us going straight west to Adelaide Boulevard, we don't have to worry about running into anything or complicating anything further.
That's good to know, thank you.
Any further questions, commissioners?
Yes. How would your customers access this building to drop off their boat to be stored? Are they going up that, the access road they're using now? They're looking to to keep that access is Hartshorn, and then up your proposed concrete into it? So it's one way in and out to drop off boats, then for you to do your in and out storage service? They're not gonna be able to access it from Adelaide Boulevard?
Not totally sure. I mean, that's, kind of goes into a conversation that Ted and I might have at some point about his parking lot. You know, maybe we can connect that way. Adelaide Point has its own new separate parking lot that's gonna be going in, that's, you know, really close. So there's, there's a number of different parking options that are there. The legal address of the building will be on Adelaide Boulevard, so there'll be, you know, some sort of parking, but.
So the PUD that's before us, the NIM that's before us, indicates a proposed gate just on the drive area, not on the bike path. But you would have a individual, an employee, that's doing traffic control around there?
Yes, and just to be clear to the commission, right? If the commission wants me to allow cars and trailers to go past that building and that forklift path, despite the fact that there's two separate entrances, I'll play ball. If we don't want anything, totally fine, right? If the city doesn't want me to put in a bypass, totally fine too. It actually saves me a little bit of money. But there are risks, and I think that that's, you know, the only consideration. Will something happen? 99.999%, no. Especially when you got somebody watching, but my mantra is always, risk properly managed equals reward, so what is your benefit for the risk, so?
I, personally, I guess I'm of the mind at this point not to have the proposed gate. That is, the placement of that proposed gate is on city-owned property. If we encounter the issues that, you know, Mr. Leesma is concerned about, that's when we can always evaluate then and reconfigure traffic flows, or add the, add the gate at that time, or have additional stuff. We can cross that bridge when we come to it.
I, I'm gonna put in the entrance off Adelaide Boulevard to the trailer parking anyway, because it just, it makes sense, right? And I need to do it for my boat storage.
Do like those two roads, keeping the one-
And, you know, if it's, if it's a problem, I'll let you know, right? I mean, all it takes is somebody going 20 miles an hour through there a few times before it's like, you know, we really can't allow this, right? I think what's gonna end up happening is you're gonna have fishermen who are used to coming in with their lunn fishing boats, and they're gonna keep coming in that way, and they're never gonna change their habit because there isn't gonna be anything to redirect them to the better way, which is safer, you know, so. It's a behavioral thing more than anything else, I think, but, you know, whatever.
Okay, just one more. 300 boats, where, where do all the trailers go for the boats?
So that's the cool thing, is that in the wintertime, if they're stored in the winter, the boats go on the trailers, and the trailers actually get put into the rack slot. But in a dry stack building, trailers generally aren't stored at all. So a lot of the customers that will be there won't have trailers for their boats. But that's kind of the whole point, is that you keep it in, in that building. You make a phone call, they put it in the water instead of you hooking up your trailer and dragging it to the ramp.
So you won't be storing any trailers for any boats that are in-
If you ever look at Adelaide Point, you notice that there's no trailers outside? It's because I like keeping it clean. And trailers are ugly.
Because they do down at Great Lakes and stuff, there's trailer storage showing, thanks.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing? Yes. We'll start with you, Jamie.
Jamie Cross. And instead of giving, saying my address, I'm gonna hand it here, so it can be recorded. I'd rather it not be public. So I wanna do one correction, though, before we, before I begin. I want to correct something that Mr. Leesma said about the permit that was pulled on Hartshorn Village. It was actually initiated, initiated by the mayor, so I just wanted to correct that before the property was bought, bought by Mr. Leesma. I wanna thank you all for what you do. I think a lot of people don't understand what the Planning Commission does, and it's so important, it's such an important role. And I really wanna thank the city also for doing this virtually and being able to record it. I watched the last one you recorded, I appreciate it. I wanna talk about PUD or PUD, kind of confusing to people. Planned Unit Development, people still don't get that. When we talk about Adelaide Point PUD, when we talk about Hartshorn PUD, I don't think people know it's the city park and property that's involved. So maybe you haven't had comments, because people don't know that there are changes proposed for the city park. So just a suggestion on how you talk about things to the community, and so that they can understand what's going on. I'm gonna focus on public access on the city park. Public access and the recreational uses at that park. The concerns I have with the changes are the lift well moving to east of the, the public launch. I'm concerned about the use of the public launch for a private entity using that. I mean, the people really should have precedent over that, that particular launch. The new boat storage proposed, it's, it's really a blind spot. You know, you've got the, you've got the street coming in right there, and then you have the bike path there also. So it's just blind. It's very, it seems very dangerous. You have, that's where most of the activity occurs, with the boats coming in, the bikes passing, passing, people walking, people fishing, very busy space. I'm concerned about operations, moving boats across any part of the public space. I, gate, no gate, barricade, no barricade. People in this community should not be impeded from using their park. Just bottom line. It belongs to the city, it belongs to the community. And this is just, I know I'm gonna jump over to the Adelaide Point thing, but I just noticed that the bathroom is not- jump over to the Adelaide Point thing, but I just noticed that the bathroom is not, and maybe there's a correction, is gone off from the, the east post, the boat basin on the Adelaide Point. It has the number, but it doesn't actually say that the bathroom's there and it looks like it's off the drawing. I'm just going to mention that because it's a big concern for me, especially because I, it'd be nice to have a bathroom there other than the, the house that's there. The, um, what I'm going to ask the, the commission today is that you consider some changes that, so that the community has access and priority to access. And then secondly, I'm going to just ask you not to vote and wait until we can have a public forum and the community can participate and the community can say what they would like to see for their public park. So the city has informed me that we will be having a forum for, for the city property. And so why not just wait until we can do that properly? Thank you. I really appreciate what you do and your time.
Sir, you're next.
Ted Fracano, 1050 West Western. So I take a deep breath because I was asked to, uh, allow this change in the PUD. And you know what? I would, I have 13 acres there. I would love all 13 acres to be rose gardens, but it is not feasible. I don't have the, the money or the time to redevelop my own property. Ryan has come to me, may we change the PUD with a, with another large gray building that would store boats. I think this is a much better plan than $700,000 homes right next to a building that sometimes hundreds of people spill out at midnight, some are intoxicated. I don't think the Nantucket Village to my west was a good fit. This is a change, but the boat launch has been in deplorable condition for years. This is an opportunity to make it work. This is an opportunity to bring 50-foot boats to finally be able to, uh, you know, grace the, the Muskegon Lake and Muskegon. Do I want an enormous, uh, building next to me that is part of my property? In a perfect world, I don't know, but this, what he has done in two short years at Michigan Steel is remarkable. He's honored his commitment. He said he would fix it up. He has. Every single building over there is, been refurbished. I don't know what the return on investment is of that is right now. I trust him that this, and his wife, that this building is going to be branded accordingly to the whole Adelaide Point. And the other thing is, he makes a lot of sense. He's adding a couple of miles of bike path to Adelaide Point. Our bike path from probably the current Hartshorn Marina to the boat launch is chronically flooded. It's chronically a mess. That area is, is not in great shape. I believe Ryan and Emily and John and myself will be committed to making it a beautiful marine-like community. Is it 13 acres of rose gardens and Disney World-esque landscaping? No. But this is what is smart and I approve it. I had the ability to not approve it. I do approve it. Um, you know what? For two or three years, I didn't know if I trusted Doug DeHaan and Sid Smith. Uh, I'm warming, and, and, Mother Teresa could have come to me three years ago and said, would you like me to do this? And I would have said, no. I'm very skeptical. Ryan, in a very short period of time, has shown me that he is going to make Adelaide Point as aesthetically beautiful and accessible to the public more than anyone ever has in the last 30 years, 50 years probably. So anyways, I approve this. I agree with this. When the building is complete, I'm going to have to have some deep breaths because I know this is different than what I've been used to over the last 10 years of owning it. But I, I trust him. He's already done an enormous amount of work on my property on his dime. That's goodwill. That's goodwill and I appreciate that. So I'm going to be a good neighbor to this. I'm going to be a good neighbor to the bike path. I want the bike path in front and behind my building to be not flooded anymore. Uh, it's going to come together. Let's just take a deep breath and say this is progress. This is boats coming to Muskegon that never had the opportunity to, really to come to Muskegon before. So thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. You in the back?
Yep. You're it.
Good afternoon. I'm Ray McLeod. I live at 1545 Middlebrook. Thank you, Commissioner, for all your work and, and your, your insightful questions and recognizing me. First, I want to address one of the things, one of, I'm only going to, I'm trying real hard to follow the directions and to not overlap any of the other comments that happened here. Uh, one of the first things that I want to address is, uh, one of the things that the developer said is that, um, the bike path is one of the most, is the most, if I remember correctly, if my notes are correctly, he said that there is nothing more controversial in Muskegon than the bike path. That's not true. That's not at all what's the most controversial thing in Muskegon. I think what's that controversy here is the blocking and the obstructing of the bike path, really. It's not the bike path. It's the, it's the obstructing of that. There's got to be a better way, right? There's got to be a better way. Or, or maybe not. Maybe we love, maybe the city, maybe the people who actually live here now, maybe, um, the people that have written in our, about the lakeshore bike trail in national magazines and, and brag about our bike path. Maybe they cherish that bike path so much. You know, may, maybe there's some value in that that can't be, um, that can't be bought by one person's, one family's, um, dream of making money. I don't know. Just, just an idea on that. And then, so, and then my other comment here is about this PUD. What this, again, going back to the developer's comments about the PUDs, not totally fleshed out yet. Talked about, but not in writing yet. Discussed, but not in the PUD. Looking at putting in the PUD. Possibly a second gate. How, how can we vote on this PUD when it's not totally fleshed out? It's talked about, but not in. It's discussed, but not in. Looking at putting in, maybe a second gate. It's too many unknowns. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the audience? Sir, way in the back, I see you.
Mr. Reiterate, thank you for taking the time to listen to all our concerns and comments and bringing up some good points of your own. Um, I believe, I'm just going to echo some of the things, but I do live a lot of times at Hartshorn. I think I'm more of the boot, Ken knows, like, I'm a bit more of a boots-on-the-ground, uh, firsthand perspective of what's actually going on at Hartshorn. So I'm more interested in the crossover of that, especially the agreement. Maybe a different meeting for that, but there are some finer points to it. Um, I don't believe the ramp really needs any upgrades and the small boat basin hasn't been closed or down for anything except the, uh, high water levels, the whole, you know, it's been closed to the public and everything. It's, that, that wasn't true. Um, as far as the, uh, fence around the Hartshorn Large Boat Basin, again, being there as much as I am, it's a integral part of what keeps it safe. The gate is open during business hours. The public is allowed in there. But again, the slips, the docks, those aren't actually open to the public. Those are designated for the leaseholder or whatever. So it's, it's really just the pavilion at the end, which you can rent as any, any member of the public. Um, I think my biggest issue I was hearing is the busy times and the holidays, especially on the bike path. I mean, I, I wake up every morning and I see how many people are going during normal business hours down that bike path. It is not a slow time of day. Once Memorial Day hits to Labor Day, I don't think there's more than a one-minute gap between groups of people walking, biking, walk, you know, exercising in any way, shape or form. Um, I think four to seven, if it's being closed, is an incredible, uh, chunk of time that you're rerouting, uh, the public that likes to use that. The other, um, Hartshorn had shoppers docks, that was also proposed, but that was when the T dock was operational. Again, another, if you bring it back, could be addressed there. Um, I think the other part is the, the kind of promised but never delivered improvements, you know? Um, slip rates go up. I understand all these things, you know, times they change. But we've got the same buildings that were there, you know? I don't know how many years it's been, but I mean, they're in desperate need of repair. And the previous developer, you know, kind of did the old carrot, you know, like, hey, when we finish all of our units, we'll upgrade, you know, and rebuild you a clubhouse and do all these things. But, I mean, even in the best case scenario, I don't think that would happen before I'd turn 45. So, uh, that's a, that's a big concern with the, the development and what's been purchased there. Um, I think my dad was having, he wanted me to ask, um, at the launch ramp especially, who gets precedent? You know, if a, you don't need an appointment to use a launch ramp. Now, if there's an appointed time that someone wants to have their boat launched, do they get, does the private entity get precedent of that launch ramp at that time? Because, you know, John Q Public wanted to go fishing for a quick 45 minutes or what, you know, like, that's, that's their right to use that ramp at the time they see fit. And especially on holidays, I don't, you know, talking about limiting congestion, I'm pretty sure as busy as that ramp is during holidays, mixing in and in and out boat storage with, and I'm sorry, I, I don't know the numbers, so I can't claim that, but I would wager on at least Memorial Day, Fourth and, uh, Labor Day, I, I, 10% of those boaters being there seems low to me. Again, that's just, just, but you think about all the people in the public that are going to be using the ramp, mixed with even 10% trying to get in and out and the amount of people on the bike path. I think, I think it's a slippery slope of rerouting the bike path and losing any of our lakeshore frontage that, you know, we all do care about. Obviously, it's not controversial. It's loved. It's something that we, we hold near and dear to our heart. And I think, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the solution would be, but I think it needs more time and more, uh, clarification on, on what can be done, what the options are. And, and I do hope you, you consider the time, uh, to take and, and let the public reach out through the forum and, and be heard. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishes to speak?
Yes, sir.
John Patton, 333 Terrace Point Landing and Circle and Terrace Point Landing. Uh, my question or concern is about the 50, 60, 70-foot boats. Uh, you mentioned hour limits, found boats, formula boats. Uh, do they make noise?
They do.
How are we going to regulate and curtail excess noise that exceeds the DNR limits?
Call police.
They will not do anything.
I can't help you.
So that's my, uh, question to the commission. I think we strongly need to consider enforcing existing noise ordinances.
Amen.
Thank you.
Sheriff's Department.
Yes, over here.
Which is supposed to be located.
Yeah, in the original site plan.
I'm Virginia Taylor and I'm speaking on behalf of Boys and Girls Club of the Muskegon Lakeshore, whose, uh, wonderful clubhouse is in the middle of being renovated right next door to, um, the property and, and right now shares a drive, um, going in and out, um, right there near the marina and then the new development. Um, I noticed as an employee coming in every day, when the berm was put up and those trees were put up, it blocked my view looking down that way, um, to see what traffic is coming. Um, and we have buses that come during, you know, after school hours. We have parents that are coming. We also have the Neil Fitness Center, which, um, we have a large number of seniors that are coming through there every day. So I think just being mindful of the traffic and going in and out, um, for this development, that you do have a, a fitness center and Boys and Girls Club right there in the mix, um, and that, um, any, anything that is done along that roadway impacts, um, the traffic going in and out of the clubhouse. Thank you.
Ma'am, when, when the renovations, uh, going to be complete, when?
This fall. So we'll be moving in this fall. The renovations are on time and, and under budget. So that's, uh, and, and so the noise, I heard the comment about the noise. Um, we'll have children right there after hours during the time that boats will be going in and out. Um, that just, just be mindful in your decision-making that there is going to be 300 children in that building five days a week, um, between the hours of two and eight. And, um, during the summer, longer. And access to the bike trail is a very, a key part and their access to the shoreline and being able to get on bikes and, and go west on the bike trail, um, is important and part of our programming. And, um, we obviously can't go east because you've got Heritage Landing and then that is, a lot of times locked up. You can go a little bit, but it, it, it's a lot easier to go the other way because there's a lot less traffic. So, thank you.
Yes.
Hello, Kathy Evans, 1899 Barnes Road. Um, in my career of restoration on Muskegon Lake, going back to years, but back in 2008, we completed the plan for habitat restoration of the shoreline. There was no money to do that work. Um, we were very lucky to get an ERA grant under the Obama administration before Great Lakes Restoration Initiative funding was available. And we got $10 million. We did a lot of habitat restoration right along the shoreline at many different locations. We thought at that time probably that Hartshorn Marina and some of the other public areas would always be public. You know, we didn't really anticipate that they would be changing. We thought maybe what we would be doing though is because they're public and so eligible for funding through state and federal programs, working with you to do good stormwater management, do, you know, native trees and shrubs and the right kind of landscaping that's good for the air, good for the community, good for the wildlife, good for the water. Those are the kinds of activities we anticipated working on now, not commenting on, you know, a development of these public access sites. And this isn't the only one. Um, but nevertheless, uh, some of those things can happen either way. However, I want to remind you that we have a lot of resiliency money available to cities and municipalities now to improve public facilities. It's not like it used to be when we didn't have the money to do the work. And I think there's more of an investment now in the, uh, within the city and within the community to maintain and take care of our shoreline now that the lake has been cleaned up. There's even money to clean up contaminated sediments, you know, the little small boat basin, which is part of Hartshorn Municipal Marina, part of the peninsula and the whole entire peninsula to the west that surrounds that former small boat basin are part of the city's property. Um, I'm not saying they can't get improved through a private development, but they can also get improved by the city using the funding that's out there, that's coming. And then I, I mean, you're probably aware of a lot of it. There's even Justice 40 money coming, which is to help connect disadvantaged communities or low-income or minority communities to waterfronts. Um, there's just so much out there with coastal resiliency, with NOAA, the partnerships we've made with EPA and others over the past 20 years or so, um, that, you know, this isn't your only shot at improving this beautiful place for the community. That's all.
Thank you. Well, let's see. I think you were next, ma'am, by the aisle.
Leah Markowski. I'm currently at 1607 Collier Drive West. Um, I just wanted to echo a couple of comments that I'd heard already. Um, one regarding the fencing around the Large Boat Basin. I recognize that there's a value of security if you are a boater. Um, but the one thing I want folks to continue to consider throughout the city is not only the walkability and treating boats as a type of tourism as we improve our access and boaters' access to the shoreline. Um, people like to be able to see what it's like to be a boater. So there is some benefit there, um, if it doesn't detract from security or we address security in a different way. Um, but also view sheds are very important. And so not only removing fencing, removing berms, if they're not doing, you know, an actual service, allows people to understand what's going on in their community. to understand what's going on in their community. And same thing with when we're looking at plans. Whenever possible, we really need to include elevations of what these look like from the ground, because this looks like a lot of really short squares to me. And I know that that's not the reality of what it represents, and I think that the community can better comment when they can see what this looks like from walking down the sidewalk, for example. And then additionally, I just wanted to echo that restrooms, we've talked about this a lot of times, are a burgeoning issue as we have more and more people downtown. We need to continue to address that. And that, my experience on the bike trail is certainly that mornings are the time that people who have the time are gonna get out and exercise, especially in the heat of the summer. People are gonna be out between seven and ten before the day gets too long. And if they've got kids, they're gonna be out in the afternoon, doing those things with them after school, before dinnertime. So we certainly need to consider that these are going to be high-use times on the bike trail. And I want to continue to have the conversation with yourselves and other members about not only noise, but just volume of traffic on the lake. I think that it's a good plan for us to continue to understand what that looks like for all of the lake neighbors and to really have an understanding of how we deal with all types of boats, because there's going to be more and more of them. Thank you.
Ma'am, I think you were next, and then I'll get the, I can't quite see your hand, but I'll get you next.
You need to use the mic. They can't hear you online.
Oh, can't hear me online. I have something I want to just pass. I'm representing small boats, not big boats.
You need to give us your name and address, too.
I also want to, Laura Swenson, and I can give you it on paper, my address, is that right?
Yep.
This is a map of what kind of waitable areas we have on Muskegon Lake. It's a little fuzzy, but let me just stress, there are very, very few places that you can launch from shore. So, there's probably not enough for all of you. I also would like to ask if any of you happen to know what happened to the two signs, right? Representing neighbors working together make a bigger difference. These were at the entrance, the small boat basin entrance and over on the other side. If anyone knows what happened to those signs, they've been there for many, many years. They represented, really, pretty significantly, all the different things that came together to do what has been done. It's possible DPW took them down. I did check with Ryan, we asked about if you had any idea what happened to them. So, that's a kind of a mystery, if I may. Representing small boats, I beg to differ, there are some sixty, eighty-foot boats, tourists have them. At least, I've seen plenty of big boats. So I'm not sure really understanding what you're saying, that there's now finally a place for big boats. Really, there's not a place for small boats. And I'm really concerned with that. Small sailboats, small kayaks, small fishing boats. Many of our public marinas have been able to accommodate that. It's getting, do we have any concept at all of what the lake carrying capacity is of boats? Do we have any idea? I really feel we need a forum to examine this. We need a public forum so we can hear from many different people about their vision. And imagine Muskegon Lake, right? How long have we been talking about this? How many times have we brought together the community to discuss this? And why are so few of the things that we have asked for available? Thank you.
Okay, ma'am, back there in the corner. Your turn.
Hello, my name is Vina Coleman, 516 Marshall Street. I just would like to have a public forum, because this right here is new to me. I didn't know this was on the docket, too, you know. And I'm looking at it, I remember him talking about the boating building on this property right here. But I didn't know he wanted another boat storage. And I'm like, okay, that's a lot of boat storage builders. It is. So, things are moving fast, but we are not getting the information as citizens of Muskegon. When we do get the information, it's passed. But that's what a lot of things in this city. And I think we should have a public forum. Me personally, I think we should have a public forum on the property so people can visualize and see what is going where. Because by the looks of this, a lot of the parking for that dock area down there is getting cut. And that little building where the bathroom's at, I don't even see it on here. So, um...
That's not the property.
Huh?
That's not the site plan we're looking at.
No, right here. Right here. Right here. That's what I'm looking at.
There's, the bathroom is at the small boat basin.
Right. And isn't he gonna work on that, too?
That's not the property we're looking at. We're looking at from that parking lot, South to Western Avenue.
Okay, is that getting cut? See, I don't know. That's why I think we should have a public forum, so things can be clarified. Because this is getting cloudier and cloudier. Probably not for you, because you hear it all. You hear it all the time. But this was new to me. I remember hearing about this, but not this. So, please, hold a public forum. I'm not against your idea, honey. I'm not. Because I kind of like some of the stuff you're doing. But I want to, I'm a visual person, and a lot of people are.
Ma'am, you need to keep your comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, honey. Well, I'm a visual person, and a lot of people are. And I think that we need to hold a public forum. I think it needs to be on the property, and we need to see what's going on. That's my, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This public forum has been mentioned several times. Is there one plan?
Yes.
And when is that going to be?
It'll be before, between now and November, or November, wrong month, February fourteenth, which is our next, or our first city commission meeting in February. So, it'll be before that. So...
So why are, why are we doing this before the forum?
Um, I, well, what was that? Well, we have a request. Yes, 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 because we have a request, and we have to respond to requests within a certain period of time to bring it to the planning commission. And staff thought it would be a good idea to have a public forum before the city commission meeting if this was to get referred to the city commission prior to the city commission seeing it. So we have to maintain certain timelines on when those applications come in. So...
Okay.
Can I just clarify, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is a public hearing itself on this. As our manager said, we have a request from a property owner to do a PUD. We have protocols and timelines that we have to adhere to. This is a public hearing for folks to learn about this and weigh in. And we received all this information just in the past week, same timeline that the, the public received it essentially. So, we're learning this, we're digging into it, we're hearing from the public, and then making a determination whether to recommend to the city commission, which ultimately will have the final say. And that's why I think it was okay for me that the, because I've been advocating for that public forum for months now as well, not for Hartshorn and Adelaide Point and the entirety of it. So it was okay to me that we'd be having the, the public forum in between this and the final determination by the city. Now, the planning commission could decide to pause, or could make a recommendation against or for, and the city commission will make the, the final determination whether to, to accept the PUD, or make further revisions to that PUD. The city commission doesn't have to just say yea or nay on what the planning commission recommends. The city commission could decide to amend the PUD that's brought before. And so, that's where there's still value and benefit from having that public forum, not only for the public to learn about this proposal and this project, but then give input to the city commission as the city commission makes its final determination. I just wanted to add that clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mark, I think I recognized you. Well, I did recognize you.
Hi, my name's Mark Evans, 1899 Barnes Road. I'm gonna share a couple things with you. One, there's a coloring book that the Muskegon Lake Watershed put together, all about Muskegon Lake and a lot of the work that's been done on it. The other is a handout of the West Michigan Water Trail, and you can get, we can get more of those. I didn't, we didn't have enough with us. These things are just a reflection of some of the work that's been done on Muskegon Lake over the last thirty years. Many people have spent countless hours on Muskegon Lake trying to improve it, and now we are almost off the area of concern list, which is coming real soon. If you look at the map on the, on the bulletin board on the back there, you'll see all the sites that have been cleaned up. And if you look close enough, it'll show the ownership of all those sites. Also, on our Facebook page, if you go there, you can click on any of those sites, see pre-construction photographs, see the plans of the, of the, what was done there, and you see after the fact, a lot of explanation about all those different sites. Some of those may be affected by what's going on. Some of them will definitely be affected on what you do in the future. So I hope you take the time to go on the Muskegon Lake Watershed partnership page, look at some of those sites, look at the things that have been done, look at the difference that's been made already, and take that into consideration that we finally got to the place where people want to get back down to Muskegon Lake again. The people in Muskegon want the opportunity to walk down the hill. A boy wants to take his can of worms and his bicycle and go down fishing. We gotta make sure we keep the public access points and all communities, all the neighborhoods need a place to be able to get down to the water. That water is in their neighborhoods, let's not forget. Their, their neighborhood is more valuable, their household is more valuable, because their neighborhood is on Muskegon Lake. Let's not forget, because there's a big road in between there. That's still in those neighborhoods.
Thank you. It's in the back.
Hi, I'm Darlene DeHudy, and I thank you so very much for taking so much time over all the details of these plans, because I think they're incredibly important. My viewpoint of this is to stand up for the poor people who have used this park for three generations. We're in the sixty-third year that this park is in existence since it's been dedicated. And it took ten years to create the park from being a swamp land with a lot of things they had to do prior. The Hartshorn family was a very naturalist-oriented family, and that is why they gave this park and marina to the city of Muskegon. The Michigan Natu- excuse me, the Michigan Department of Natural Resources operates with the mission of inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility, as does many organizations today. This park, which I wasn't that familiar with until I went down there and saw the people using it, is incredibly special, as is the bike path, because it was well-planned and many people use it. The reason I bring up the Michigan Department of Natural Resources' mission is because the Hartshorn Park, Hartsoorn, Hartshorn, excuse me, that's the correct pronunciation, meets these four concepts perfectly. All ages, all races, all economic levels, all, all use this park. And they've used it for three generations. Each generation has taught another how to fish there. They've come there in cars, trucks, by bicycle, walker, wheelchair, electronic wheelchair, crutches, trailers, motorhomes, on foot to observe or participate in this park. And these people aren't here right now. And anything that obstructs what they have done for three generations is wrong. I don't fault anybody for coming up with a new idea to make Muskegon better and increase the property taxes and all of that kind of stuff, that's fine. But when it impinges on people that come from the neighborhoods and come from other cities, I did a survey with these people and I talked to them. And they love this park. And they've come from far, they've come from North Muskegon, Roosevelt Park, Grand Rapids, Norton Shores, all over, not just at Muskegon Heights, of course, Muskegon, of course. But if this is the only access point to launch a boat for the public, I don't want them to have competition from fifty and sixty-feet boats. I don't think that's the priority for Muskegon. And another thing is, I saw the destruction of the woods on that property, and I think that is one of the saddest things that could have happened. We will be having more floods. Climate change isn't gonna make Muskegon an exception. It's, it's gonna happen here like it's happened everywhere else. And that was an absorption for a lot of the flooding that will be coming. So, that's gone. It was also beautiful. Raising a lot of trees is certainly not beautiful.
That wasn't this property. The property we're talking about is the Hartshorn Village property. You're thinking of Adelaide.
Well, it's nearby. I'm sorry, I don't mean to...
We'll be dealing that, but as soon as we finish this, we'll be dealing with that.
Okay.
And you can make your comments at that time.
Okay. I would ask that, you know, the public's rights to use that park be upheld. And also, please put up a sign saying that there is a Hartshorn Park and Marina. Why isn't there one there? So that people can actually use it. The continual users know it's there. But there's a lot of people that don't even know it's there. I mean, I didn't use it very much, but I can tell you this, since I have been there and met those people who get along beautifully, no matter who they are, I'll go there and I'll take a fishing pole there, and I'll enjoy it. You're always looking at the value of a barcode. There's a lot more value in a natural area, and I hope people understand that, and I hope they protect it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment on this? Seeing none?
I would move, we close the public hearings.
And moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Well, I'll, so we can have some discussion. I would move that the request to amend the plan unit development at Hartshorn Village be recommended to the city commission for approval with the following conditions. The applicant must demonstrate to staff how they intend to meet the stormwater requirements. It must be noted that the trail and parking lot need to be adjusted to get the previous application to protect the trail during high water and precipitation events. The size of the boat storage facility must be described and a rendering must be provided, which I think we did get.
Yeah, I think a couple of these could be amended. I think the four points staff is still looking for is that a stormwater permit is issued, the bike path is elevated, ten-inch concrete is to be installed where the forklift is to operate, and future community and pool location is to be removed.
In addition to what the staff just said, and I assume you got that correctly, is that the gate not be included and the fencing removed.
From the...
Large boat basin and the small boat basin.
That's outside of the PUD.
Well, the large boat basin, then. We'll deal with the small boat basin.
Well, no, the P, the large boat basin is outside of the PUD. Because the, the PUD boundary is the private property only. The PUD, am I understanding this correctly? That we are not, we're only being asked to amend private property.
Correct.
With this PUD, it is not encompassing any city public property.
The mayor is correct. The property does not extend like we're to the trail. So, my, my error. So we'll leave it at the four described by staff.
Okay.
Sorry.
Been moved and seconded to approve, to approve the requests to amend the plan unit development. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I, I think we do need to. I think there's a lot of legitimate concern, particularly as it's grown over the last few years, over, and I'll be honest... few years over, and I'll be honest, I'm concerned about the citizens of Muskegon. I'm glad we have friends who come in from other communities and take advantage of our assets, but my primary concern as a resident of Nelson, which has several miles of lakefront, very little which is actually public, this is a very near and dear issue to me and for many of my neighbors. I'm not a boater, so I understand those issues, but that's not my issue. My issue is, as a pedestrian, primarily access to that water. I don't like the fences, I like when they go away, I like the bike path, I don't like folks zipping by with electric bikes going thirty miles an hour because they're dangerous, quite frankly, to everybody else on the bike path, but that's outside the scope of what we do here. So looking at this specific site plan and these specific requests, let's remember, this is an old factory site. The natural condition of this property is water bottom. I mean, this was at the bottom of the lake a hundred and fifty years ago. So, you know, how do we make the best use of it today so that the public park and marina provides the best benefit to the people of the NIMs neighborhood, the folks downtown, of which I'm one, and for the larger community? And as it is, it's barely accessible, it's in poor repair, the seawalls failed, it's a mess, so we need to make it better. And quite frankly, I don't see how this prevents that. My one concern was with the gate, anything that does block access, if it proves to be a problem, then it can be looked at going into the future. So we're being asked to approve a particular facility and operation. The rest of this plan unit development is basically what was there before. So that's been out there for several years now. I guess my reminder to everybody is, anything over about seven feet tall is going to block your view of the water. Doesn't matter if it's a one-story building or a twenty-story building, you can't see through it either way. If it's a six-foot-tall fence, or if it's a mature tree, you still can't see through it. So we have to be mindful of those issues as well. So improving view sheds is important, regardless of what's blocking the view shed. Having access to the actual water is important, regardless of whether it's being used to store boats in the marina, or it's just a place where people can drop a fishing line into the water. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this because I think this does actually meet those criteria. We're the largest city on the lakeshore. This is not a natural area, this is not actually the lakeshore that we're talking about, it's adjacent to the lakeshore. The access to the marina is actually going to be improved once Adelaide Boulevard is put through, which right now, we don't have direct access to the marina. You've got to cut through somebody's private property to get to it. That's not sustainable. So this is a step in the right direction, it accretes the amount of use for this property, it allows more people to access it, and ultimately, hopefully, it will get the city to improve what is the single biggest piece of city-owned waterfront in downtown. And I think it needs a lot of TLC, the city part of this property. So I don't see how this development takes away people's access to the water, I don't see how it impedes anybody. My only concern was that gate, and my motion asked that it not be included. So those are my comments, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Zaid?
So I have some comments as well, some of which are similar. I agree with what Larry had to say about the public access, the public access to this city property through the ramp doesn't change. You know, people will still access that. I didn't like the gate aspect of the proposal, and I'm glad to see that that's been removed. But I sat here and thought about, how does this proposed development differ than what we have along the lake already in many cases? We have many similar crossings of the Lakeshore Trail now on properties. Some are similar to this, you know, we have a number of other marinas that cross the property or cross the trail. But we have some crossings of the trail that I think are probably even more dangerous than what's being proposed here now. You know, I think about Ver Plank, the trucks going across there, and Great Lakes docks and some other crossings of the trail. You know, we have a property owner who owns on both sides of the trail, and they have a, in my opinion, they have a right to access. I don't like the idea of the gate, but I think we've resolved that issue. And so what's being proposed, or what hopefully we approve, is not going to be a whole lot different, and I don't think it's going to be any different than what we have on the lakeshore and a number of other properties. So for that reason, for those reasons, I support the proposal.
Okay. Any other comments, commissioners?
I guess one comment that I would make is, you know, whatever recommendation we make here, you know, it does go onto City Commission, and there's another chance to impact this, and with the public forum to educate on, or get questions answered, or however you want to look at it, on what's going on with this development. So this isn't the end of the process, I guess, is the way.
Kind of the beginning.
One last comment, if I might. Just as a reminder to everybody, the city actually owns four boat launches on Muskegon Lake, and this is the one that's used the least.
Because it's the one in the worst dire air.
Absolutely. And one of the things that this does is change that, so actually it would become more usable than what it's been. It's been closed for like three years, till last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Which I'll still keep in mind, though, on that point, and I was going to ask that earlier, or point that earlier, is that it's the developer's desire to make that upgrade to that launch ramp, but that's not part of this PUD, and that's a completely separate, standalone thing. Whether or not the city will, you know, agree in octopus, just saying we're going to do an upgrade to allow a triple axle, that is a TBD. That is not, this PUD approval, if this gets approved for recommendation to the City Commission, the City Commission ultimately adopts it, it does not require that upgrade to a triple axle. That is a separate matter entirely, I just wanted to clarify there for anyone that might be wondering.
Good point.
Yeah, and don't forget to pay attention to what's been said out here about the noise. Big boats, you know, looking at the noise ordinance on the lake and sticking to that, potentially no wake zones. If you don't have that on Muskegon Lake, that might be a good idea, too.
Would that, City Manager, on that point, would that be the sheriff's enforcement?
So the sheriff's enforcement on the water, they have the marine unit, and so the no wake zones, I believe, would be their purview.
Okay. So maybe the applicant can explain on the next item under Adelaide Point PUD about whether or not the sheriff's water unit will be continuing, will still be operating from Adelaide Point, because that's what had been explained before, that a sheriff's water unit will be at Adelaide Point, so that would be helpful for enforcement in the immediate area, including our Hartshorn Marina.
Any other comments, commissioners? I have some comments tonight. I cannot vote in favor of this project tonight, and there's three reasons. I think there is too big a disruption to the bike path, and this needs to be resolved before I would be willing to approve this. I also have problems with the management of Hartshorn Marina and being the owner of Hartshorn Village. I consider that to be a direct conflict of interest. And I know you said you were reviewing it, I think we need to wait till that review is done. And the third and the most important reason, and I'm not going to vote in favor of this tonight, is I want to hear what the public forum has to say, and I'm not willing to make a decision on this project until I hear that. So that's my comment. Other comments?
Yes?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I'm vacillating, you know, I'm a biker, I'm a boater, you know, do all this kind of stuff and love every inch of our shoreline, but I do have a hesitancy with the commercial use in a public space, and that's my big issue, and I will probably vote no on this proposal.
Okay. Any other commissioner?
Okay. So-- Well, on that point of commercial use, because this is a commercial entity on private property that is essentially using egress across that, I don't, I guess I'm not understanding the distinction from commercial operations using our public roads and, you know, other public right-of-ways to conduct their commerce. We have chartered fishing boats that use, that launch from there as well. So, I mean, are we to regulate and stop all charter boats? I mean, would, I'm just trying to understand, extend that logic out.
My concerns mainly are the noise, the congestion, the, you know, just the traffic on the bike path and that whole area would be increased substantially, and, you know, there are some issues.
I, um, there's a lot of, still to be answered. There's still, I mean, even in the amendment, or this amendment, the motion for this amendment, it's saying you need to submit this, though, we need to get this clarified, so da-da-da. And then beyond all of that, there's still a number of unknowns in terms of how this interplays with marina operations or our boat launch ramp, or with that potential, because with the original PUD for Hartshorn Village, it was envisioning that this development was going to create incremental tax growth that we were going to be able to capture to not only reimburse the developer for the new housing, but also potentially be used for investments in Hartshorn Marina itself. And so I'm wondering where that's left and the prospect of being able to have this benefit the upgrades to Hartshorn Marina itself, potentially adding that T-dock, or, you know, reinforcing that seawall. I would also be interested from, I don't know if Mr. Franzick or anyone else at the city has done an assessment on that lift well or drop lift. I think it's sensible that if we've got infrastructure there, that drop lift to use, it seems sensible to use it versus building, you know, several multimillion-dollar lift well in the small boat basin, so I can see the sensibility of that. But have we done any kind of evaluation that that drop lift there is in good enough condition that it can be used, that we're not going to have to make significant investment in upgrading or repairs to get into a usable fashion?
Okay, I got a response to you. I like Joe, I am really torn on this, I really like the project, I'm a big-time boater, I think it's great. I don't like the thing that's going on the bike path. I like what was said here, though, is resolving the issues big time, I do. I agree with you that maybe we ought to sit back a little bit because there is so much that we talked about tonight that's not even on this drawing. I don't know what I'm approving, so I'm a little nervous about that. So my suggestion would be maybe to table this versus vote no, because I don't want to vote no. I really want to vote yes, but I don't think I'm ready to make the yes vote.
I think I'd be forced to abstain personally at this point.
Right.
Are you making a motion to table?
Before--
Let's hear it.
Washington's table takes precedence.
Right, that's why she's holding off before we stop. So I just want to remind everybody, there's a lot of very important issues that have been brought up, and they're legitimate and they need to be resolved. They are not planning commission site review issues. The planning commission has zero say on the city of Muskegon negotiating an operations agreement for Hartshorn Marina.
Yeah.
Zero. That is outside the purview of this body. So some of the other issues that have been brought up also are outside the purview of this body. Our authority is, does the requested proposal, where the buildings are, how the storm waters address, wastewater, utilities, all of those kinds of things, access, does it meet our zoning ordinances for that type of structure and construction or not? And that, to me, is a pretty cut-and-dried issue. Now, can this move forward unless some of those other things are resolved? I don't know, but that's a discussion for the City Commission and city staff to have with the developer. Our authority is, does this site plan, the buildings and their use, meet the ordinance requirements or not? And, you know, clearly they do with the amendments that have been recommended by staff, and the removal of that gate based on this discussion.
I'm going to have to disagree with you, Commissioner, because we're a body that are making a recommendation to the City Commission on this project. And so that is an influence on the City Commission, and we're going to go ahead without all these other pieces of information and make that recommendation? I didn't say I'm opposed to the project, I said I'm not going to vote for it tonight because of the reasons that I listed. I don't want to make a recommendation to the City Commission to either pass this or fail it. I want more information for my decision on this board. Sir, we're in the middle of a vote, I don't think I can call on you.
Commissioner Mazzate had his hand up.
I'll yield to him if you want to recognize him. All right, if you want to do that, I will allow him to speak. Sir, you may speak.
So there's a lot of issues that have been talked about here, they're important to me. Sure, I see the eye rolls, whatever, right? Like, here's the reality of it, if I can't put my storage operation there, Adelaide Point stops.
That's what they want.
That's, well, that may be what they want, right? And I've been busting my tail, and I've invested ten million dollars turning that place around and putting something together that creates tons of, tons of public access, more bike trails, restores the shoreline, but the economic reality is that I am not Superman. I need that boat business in order to support the revenue so that my bank will approve what I'm doing, so I can get financing. So if everybody wants to make Adelaide Point stop, vote no. If everyone would like to see Adelaide Point happen with thirty-five-hundred linear feet of waterfront access, private property being turned over to the public's general use, nobody's ever done that here. Three acres of waterfront property, a park where you can go with your family, nobody's ever done that here. Kayak launches, you name it. Now, right now, on my bike path agreement, it says that I have the unlimited unrestricted ability to move boats in and out across the bike path without reservation, confirmation, or permission. I can continue to do that, but then AP doesn't happen, and the seven days a week that I've been working, eighty, ninety hours a week, to try and create the most transformational, unbelievable, sustainable, it stops. Stops. I am not going to put my time and millions of dollars into something that will kill the only way to make this happen. I just, I can't do it, guys, I can't, Eagle said no. If that's what the group wants, I mean, that's cool, you know, I'll go away. But I'm not Superman, and the economic reality absolutely one-hundred percent requires that I have a revenue base to invest. I'm not willing to throw the future of my wife and my kids on the line and kill a business that has a million dollars of revenue and throw it all, I just, I won't, I just, I won't do it. I mean, I need to use that, and that's all there is to it. So it's up to the planning commission, and ultimately, the City Commission. If everyone here is so passionate about public access and bike paths and kayak launches and all these things, you're looking at the guy that can give more of that to you than anybody. You keep, always keep what the city has, you always will, but I can give you more. But I have an economic reality of how I have to do that, so, I mean, that's about it. I hope I get your support.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any more discussion?
Commissioner Mazzate has his hand up.
So I understand concerns about not moving forward with some unknowns, but they're, from my perspective, as Commissioner Patel said, we do know what's being requested. You know, I think sometimes that-- You know, I think sometimes that um things are thrown up as distractions by people saying that, you know, there's some unknowns or, or the thing, some things they don't like and we should take a step back. And I, and I understand that, but we have a proposal on the front, we know what it is. You know, there's other issues that are outside of what this proposal is that, as Larry said, you know, isn't within our purview. Um, so I- I think we know what is being proposed. There were some concerns that raised and I think we tried to mitigate those um from the standpoint of, of the gate issue. And as I said earlier, we have traffic that goes back and forth across that path in a whole lot of different ways. Um, and this isn't any different. And how should we, you know, decide that we're gonna pull this piece of property out and say, you know, you can't do the same thing that other people do. Um, you know, I, I think this is a good plan, not just from this standpoint, but the- the- the more global view of what um these owners want to do with the property, and I think we need to move forward. Thank you.
Is that it?
No. Well, I certainly don't want to stand in, in the way of the project overall and the fact that if this does go, it will go to the city commission and it will go to the city commission after a public forum. And that, I think, is really important for everyone here to understand that, that there is a scheduled public forum before February fourteenth. Um, moving this to the, to the city commission's decision is um predicated on our vote today, so it's something that, uh, it's a toss-up, it's really a tough.
It's difficult.
You know, I think the discussion is always good. Um, you know, that more people involved, it's, it's a good, but we've had a two-hour forum here. You know, we're gonna talk, call it a public hearing or forum, that's what we've had.
Right.
You know, on this particular issue.
Understood.
We done with discussion now?
So, um, I agree, Commissioner Spataro, about the differences between what this planning commission and what the city commission, I think uh what this planning commission needs to evaluate and make a recommendation on is um the request here, the site planning here, its uses, its configuration, some of the um ancillary things um are not necessarily our purview, ultimately it could be under the city commission's purview. Um, we have wider latitude in terms of how we determine um whether to adopt or deny uh those changes. Um, and some of the questions of unanswered things, I think, are, are, are yes, outside of this body's purview. But I see a number of things, even in the staff recommendation, there's talking about conditions and we need this address and this address and this address still, that it.
That's pretty commonplace, isn't it?
Yeah.
We- we see it occasionally, this is a lot.
Occasionally?
This is a lot.
Pretty much every time.
This is a lot. Um, so it gives me pause in that regard. Um, the- the height to, to one of the attendees' questions with regard to the heights, that was not in the packet. We received it separately, uh, I don't know if that made it to our website and shared with the public, so I don't know if the public has all that same information then. Um, because it's not clear in this PUD and in our packet the scope of that building, it's a sizable building, the boat storage and it looks like it's over forty feet tall or approximately forty feet tall, according to the second attachment that was shared subsequently. Um.
It, it's over seven feet tall. It's. So, we have the footprint and we know the entire footprint is not going to be something you can look over. Just like any other building. Doesn't matter if it's seven feet tall or seventy feet tall, it equally blocks the view when you're standing on the other side of it.
And, and it matters the configuration, you know, how wide, how deep, the configuration of it because if someone pointed out.
We have the footprint on the proposal.
Yep.
That's the footprint.
Rendering as well.
And that's what I'd like to understand, the impact on view sheds as well.
Can we cut this personal discussion between you two down a little bit?
So, I want, no. I think it's sensible to use personally, assuming it's in good, good enough shape of views, I'm of the mind that it's sensible to have that boat storage service there. Um, and with quick and short access, minimizing disruption to the bike path or other um public property there by having quick, short access to the drop wells there, the, the lift drops um right there, um, that's pre-existing infrastructure. Um, Commissioners Spataro has already explained the minimal impact on the, the public access. Um, I ultimately do want to see and understand how this ties into Adelaide Point and would like to see Adelaide Point um development proceed. Um, there's a lot of benefits for a wide variety of people, including the city um and public access. I'm comfortable with this proceeding, knowing that we're gonna have that public hearing or public forum and I do think there's a distinction between a forum and a hearing. Um, so I'm comfortable that the public forum is gonna be happening between now and the city commission, so I I don't have necessarily concerns about the, yeah, about the sequence of events there. Um, I'm still just trying to decide how I'm gonna vote in terms of yes, no, or abstaining. But if this bodies makes a recommendation in favor to the city commission, I'm comfortable with that outcome, knowing that we'll have that public forum and then the city commission will have the final say.
Okay. Is that it now?
Yeah, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Joe Doyle?
No.
Brian Mazzate?
Yes.
Bill Montgomery Keast?
Yes.
Larry Spataro?
Yes.
Ken Johnson?
My inclination is abstain. Um, and then I wanted to make an amendment to it before.
You have a reason to abstain.
Um, I could say, lack of information or inadequate information to make an informed decision. Um, knowing that we're gonna have the public hearing and ultimately I'll have another chance to vote on this as the city commission, I will support. Um, no, because I don't like it as in current configuration, so I'll say no.
Jonathan Seifert?
Yes.
Tim Mikulski?
No.
Fails on a tied vote.
Three no's.
How many yeses?
Four, three, four.
Oh, I was thinking there was four of us.
Four, three, it goes.
It goes, okay.
The motion passed.
Motion, motion's been approved. Now we move on to hearing case twenty-two-three dash oh-two. Uh, when we get to the public hearing part, we've heard a lot about Adelaide Point and I don't, unless you have something that hasn't been brought up yet, I'd ask you to just go on the fact that the comments have already been brought up so we can get home. Okay, public hearing, case twenty-three oh-two.
This is a request to amend the planned unit development at Adelaide Point. The original PUD was approved in September of twenty-twenty-one.
That's wild.
Uh, was amended again in June of twenty-twenty-two and those amendments included uh the addition of Adelaide Boulevard to make Adelaide Circle a one-way and it removed uh one condo building and split one building into two. The amendments that are being requested today is to uh rotate condo building one just slightly to avoid the bike trail, to remove the pool from the condo building. Uh, there still will be one other pool on the development. Uh, the East Boat Basin will be uh removed from launching boats and use Hartshorn and uh boat condo structure C-six has been combined to one large building.
Okay, Commissioner, any questions?
Yes.
I have a question for the developer, I don't know.
But why don't you wait till he comes up?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, would the person making the request come to the podium? We have your name in the test, so just tell us about the project.
Uh, hi, I'm nervous and relieved. Uh, from twelve oh-four, that was a joke. Twelve oh-four to West Western Avenue. Um, so these tweaks are all pretty minor. Uh, on South Campus, we had three buildings, we're just gonna make one. Uh, we didn't want to infringe on the bike path as it currently sits, so we uh moved the pool out for now. Uh, eventually there'll be some sort of uh discussion with the city and the DNR uh as to where that goes. Um, the Adelaide Circle uh is now one-way. Uh, it's very wide, it's as wide as a two-lane road. Um, so that there's proper fire engine access. There's angle parking on it. Uh, the purpose of the one-way uh and the angle parking and the width of the one-way is for safety. So, if people are only parking one-way, then obviously there's less of a risk of there being some sort of collision. The road is very wide so that we have uh a bike path integrated into it. Uh, we also have an EV lane integrated into it, so we have a separation of individuals. One of the comments that we received prior was that there would be too much congestion uh on the bike path, so we actually created alternate pathing uh to ensure that there is safety. Um, all pretty minor changes, obviously the East Basin is no longer being utilized because Eagle said no. Um, but ultimately it's, it's relatively the same, it's just, we want to slow people down, segment traffic to keep people safe. Um, and uh improve access by creating more parking that's angled, you can pack in more cars and put them closer to the water.
Okay. Questions, commissioners?
Uh, I do, um, you know, in light of what we've spent the last two and a half hours discussing, or hour and a half, whatever it's been, um, one of the key points, and this is on the Adelaide Point side of the discussion, not the Hartshorn Village side, but it's pertinent, and that is the configuration of Adelaide Boulevard. So, you know, I, as I recall and I'm looking at the map, it should, it is a public street, it should have, or be used as a public street, it should have pedestrian access on both sides in the form of sidewalks. It will directly connect Western Avenue to the land we've been discussing, which is the Hartshorn Marina and specifically right to the immediate east of the boat launch. So, that would be the primary access point for the neighborhood in Nims um and for boaters who want to launch their boat and so on, so.
There, there's also gonna still be the full waterfront access of the property, all thirty-five hundred feet.
Right.
Um, and uh during busier periods, you know, we wouldn't be using uh the ramp to keep congestion down, holidays, obviously, we're not gonna be using the ramp, I mean, there's gonna be some level of common sense there to make sure that everybody does have access.
So, with, by removing the pool, you're basically not altering the current bike path?
Uh, not at this time. Uh, there, when we add all the new bike pathing, it's gonna have to be moved around a little bit.
And a, and part of the proposal we're looking at is additional extension north.
Yes, sir.
Along that real narrow, I guess it's the, would be the west side of the Marina. Is that gonna be?
Yes, sir.
Put in then?
Yes, so there's gonna be new, the bike path right now is city property from what I understand.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's legally the city's, right? So, the idea is with the cooperative use agreement that we're putting together that there will be public easement that goes down a bike path to the west peninsula to get to the fishing pier. There'll be a bike path with public easement that goes down the long peninsula. Um, and not related to this, but there'll be some sort of pathing on the municipal peninsula that will be installing, sorry.
Um, the other thing, I didn't see it in the proposal, but are you reducing the number of slips in the Marina proposed?
Uh, yes, so the total number of slips have gone down inside of there from two hundred to a hundred and seventy-three. Um, the total acreage of the Marina has been reduced by about forty percent, the total dredging volume has reduced by forty percent. The wetlands impact with, this is all from Eagle, uh has been reduced by ninety-five percent. I mean, overall, it's a much, much, much lower impact, the rock wall isn't there anymore, we're using a battered pile system, so I mean, it's significant. Partnership with Eagle.
Have you got your final approval for the uh Marina?
Uh, we've agreed on all terms, the permit is being drawn up now.
Okay. I, I'm really disappointed in the fact that you can't use a small boat basin to launch the boats, that certainly would have solved a lot of problems. I was in that, I was in that Marina for thirty years and I willingly gave, gave it up when it came to a vote here because I thought that would be a good solution. Uh, I really, really have a problem with using the public launch ramp to launch boats. Uh, this, this is an example of the mix- mixture that of, of public, public and, and, and commercial usage. You know, that one time the Port City Princess used to be at the Hartshorn Marina.
Yeah.
And they had to kick it out because the state would not allow that mixture. So, I, I'm concerned about this, and, and I, I'm not exactly sure where the funding came for, for that launch ramp, but if it was state money and now we're mixing commercial into it, I don't know what's gonna happen. That's my only concern with your project.
I, I can tell you that I worked with the state and the state assured me that it was entirely legal. That's all I can really say. Um, it doesn't create any conflicts with grants.
That's why I asked.
Um, you know, corporation is a taxpayer like a private citizen, I mean, there is equality of access to public facilities, it's supposed to be there, so I did check that though.
Okay.
So.
Glad you did. Thank you, that's the only thing I had. Any other comments? Thank you, sir.
I, I just want to make one other comment too, that um I- I'm available for anybody that ever wants to talk. Like I've reached out to some people here and, and haven't gotten any responses. Uh, onsite tours, I don't know if that, madam, but um, I'm open to that. I publish my number on Facebook. Um, I'm as transparent as they come, probably to a fault sometimes. And uh, I'm always available. So, like little suggestions made about, you know, trees that don't look right on the berm, tell us. You know, um, we would like to see this, tell us. You know, these sort of projects, uh, although it takes an incredible, it's taken an incredible amount of intensity and energy on my part to keep pushing it forward because it's, you know, ridiculously complex, it is a team effort. You know, like the changes that we've made to the Marina and the whole plan, that was through Eagle and actually it created a better project by the time we got done with everything. You know, so I, I actively would like to invite people to come to me. We can have public forums, it's all good, right? Um, but I'm always available and I would encourage people to reach out to me. Um, that's all I would say, so I would encourage that to everybody in the room.
Okay, thank you.
A question for the developer?
Yes.
Am, am I reading this correctly, so you, the access points to the Marina itself, um, there's been reduced to two access points now?
Uh, yeah.
To get onto the dock, okay.
Yeah.
Because I know there was a, the, there was a point of concern from some, some of our residents.
Yes, that also is that.
It's about the, the interaction of people going on to the, the docks, the people using the trail.
So.
A lot of uh congestion and so.
Yes.
I, I just appreciate your being responsive to those concerns by uh reducing those number of.
Yeah, so in the new Marina configuration, there's an internal dock that connects all the piers, so it's not gonna require that Marina customers have to go back out onto the bike path in order to go from one dock to another. So, again, that's another example where it's like, you know, as you work through it, we can, we can make a better project, so.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience wish to bring up something that we haven't heard? Yes.
Hi, Kathy Evans, eighteen ninety-nine Barnes. Uh, when I worked for West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission, we had a NOAA grant that allowed us to do fish and wildlife habitat restoration along the peninsulas on the, all around the property, actually. Uh, we did some work at uh both of the Hartshorn Peninsulas, the one that used to be called Foundry Park and also the, the other one where you used to store all the um buoys. Um, and then also on the far, far west peninsula too, um, the Kirksey property, so it was Michigan Steel and Kirksey when we did the work. So, I've been looking at this um carefully from a habitat point of view to see what's gonna happen there. There is a permanent conservation easement on the part, on the uh peninsulas where we did the work and it looks as if they're honoring those and um have good consultants working on those um and designing them. Um, one thing I noticed is that uh now with the change, though, potential change, um, with, you won't have as many boats coming up in the former small boat basin, they call it East Basin. Um, there may not be as much need for as much rock on those and that may have been changed, I haven't seen an Eagle permit, so I don't know. Um, but I did also. But I did also notice that the peninsula that goes out furthest on the west side of the Small Boat Basin, right, you know, some of it has been washed down, and it's actually very resilient. I hear a lot of people say, oh, it's all washed away. Well, that's because back when we did the restoration, there was all this foundry fill and slag and junk and concrete and pipes that we took out, and we put back clean sand and some rock at the toe. Now, a resilient shoreline is going to meander, it is going to change and move a little bit. It shouldn't be considered erosion or washed away, it's just reaching that equilibrium where now you're going to see those emergent wetland bulrushes and things like that come in that will keep it safe and sound. The reason I'm bringing that up now is because I think having public access out there is important, and you're going to want to make sure it is not erosive when those kinds of improvements happen. But don't do overkill, you know? You probably don't need to on that peninsula, especially on the east-facing side of that longest peninsula. It is coming back nice, I've been out there on a kayak looking up close and personal. It's what we now call a resilient shoreline, right? That's what we want along our coastlines. We don't build as close to the shoreline because we don't want to worry about the climate change issues of flooding and washing things away. So that's something that is going to be in the Eagle permit, probably. I haven't seen it. Maybe there's been a change, but I think originally there was rock going up higher than what we had put to make sure and protect that and keep it from washing away in the future. But I think there can be a really good design done there to make it still natural, so people have a natural area to fish from, too. You know, when you walk down there to fish, you don't want it to always have to be a pier or a boardwalk or a railing. You want nature around you, right? So that's a great opportunity on that peninsula to keep that feel, that's all.
Very quickly, I understood the mayor and the chair had a brief conversation about commercial vehicles using public roadways. And while that, of course, of course, is true, I would beg anybody to find an opportunity where commercial vehicles are allowed to close a public road from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 in the morning, and again from 4:00 till 7:00 PM. And lastly, Mr. Lutman, I'd love to have a moment to exchange contact information with you after the meeting.
Thank you. And somebody over here? Come on up. The young lady in the orange will be next.
She told me to go.
Oh. Yeah, well, I'm calling her now.
Yeah, sorry. Jamie Cross, you have my address. Just a couple things, just thinking about the $80 million that went into the lake to restore it, the years of people that worked to restore the lake, the sweat, the group, you heard Kathy talk about the money that went into the development or into the Small Boat Basin and the other places, the public funds that will also go towards Adelaide Point to help support it. I just want to mention, there's a lot of public funds that are going in, so it's an investment the community has made, too, and the people this community have made, so just want to mention that. And I just want to ask about the bathrooms again. I think it's A11, and it's not in the key, but there is a number for A11 in the basin, and I just want to ask about the kayak launch because I don't see that here, and it might be just not in this thing. So looking at A11, it doesn't appear to be in the key, but I'd be happy to see if, you know, I'd like to have the bathroom there.
I see what you're saying now. It's not in the legend, gotcha. Because I was like, I see it on the map, but it's not in the legend.
Yeah, okay.
I'm Lea Markowski, 1607 Collier Drive West. I didn't mention earlier that I'm also currently the chair of the Muskegon Lake Watershed Partnerships, it's a very long name, Public Access to Natural Resources Committee, which is partially the reason why I'm here, otherwise, other than just being interested. Quick question is, the 300-feet notification when you send out for these types of hearings, where is that drawn from? Is that drawn from the middle of the street or at some point on the property? I only ask because these types of properties are somewhat removed from the nearest neighbors, and so I just want to make sure that we're actually considering who's really interested versus who's 300 feet away.
I'll get the expert to answer that. Mr. Vance?
300 feet from any portion of the parcel.
Okay, so the edge of the parcel. In regards to Adelaide Point.
Could I, you also sent it out to the neighborhood associations.
And the neighborhood associations get it.
So we, it was on our website and our newsletter.
In regards to Adelaide Point failing, there was a comment that that was what they want, and I want to take exception to that. I do not think that even the detractors really want Adelaide Point to fail. What they want is success for the larger community, and I think that the hours and work need to be done to be good stewards and to dig into what that really means for people. I also want to acknowledge that the public forum process, it's currently very fluid, and it needs refinement, but it is working. You've referenced it as feeling comfortable with your decision based on the fact that there will be a public forum. And to me, that means that it's acknowledged as a necessary, ongoing, repeatable thing that we need to enshrine in the process, in your decisions. And then, just kind of quickly, I think we all need to be more comfortable being uncomfortable, including people who are in sales. You're often told, no, you have to get comfortable talking about hard things and having discussions. So I want to appreciate and acknowledge that you are having these discussions and that the people in the room are spending their time to have these discussions. I just want to let you all know that these hours are long because they matter. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak?
Move to close the public here? Oh, sorry. Hand by hand.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Dennis Kirksey, I live at 1856 Cedar. I'm going to just try to keep my comments brief. I am an employee, an employee of Adelaide Point, so just let that be known. And also, part of the family, it was previous owner of half of this Adelaide Point site. Been a fixture of 1204 West Western for over 30 years. Nobody, in my opinion, that's kicked the tires on buying the parcel or the Foundry's parcel in the last 20 years, 30 years, has ever brought as much community, good and public access as what Ryan is doing with this development. A lot of the things that were in the original request have obviously been scaled back as a result of the permit process with Eagle and Army Corps. I'm also chair of the Muskegon Lake Watershed Partnership, and I do care deeply about what is being done with the water. Frankly, I think some of Eagle's changes were for the detriment of the project. I think they sacrificed some things on the cutting board of the table that were beneficial to the community, but at that, they're happy, we're happy, I guess. I want to address one thing, which I don't know if it goes with the previous request that was made, but I keep hearing this comment that commercial uses and public space aren't compatible, or there's a question in a few of your minds whether it is. I'm going to refer you back to 2005, 2006, when I started a boat business, boat storage business called Waterfront Storage on that site. City of Charlevois was in a similar position of people wanting to handle boats and do it. City, the municipality of Charlevois, Michigan, applied for funds, grants to do exactly what Ryan's talking about doing with your ramp. It's your ramp, it's your property. They applied for funds, and they put in one of the biggest, heaviest launch ramps that exists in the state. And what it did for them, they also went and they cleared every power line down the road for about a half a mile, so there was no overhead obstructions. And what it did is it drove the value on all that property upland, because now folks like Bergman Marine went and they put 250,000-square-foot building for boat storage and service a half-mile upland. They weren't eating up the shoreline with these buildings because the state helped, state and Fed helped them build a very safe ramp for launching. So when we talk about, you know, crossing trails and all that, I'm the guy typically moving those boats that are going across the trail. And yes, we are very cautious, very capable of doing it, and we do it in the safest manner we can, but, you know, public safety is always a concern. And those of you that use the trail, as I do, you know, that if I'm approaching to launch a boat or haul a boat, I wait for you first, but I'll be honest, nine times out of 10, people on the trail, they want to stop and watch. So it's not a bad thing. I consider it, you know, it's working tourism, if you will. I have no problem with that, and I would hope the rest of the community to embrace this project as it, as it really should be. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Moved to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and supported to close the public hearing. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it was the same.
Any changes to the staff recommendations before motions made?
I just want to mention that. I think all three have been alleviated. The elevations were provided, we do have them here. The bike path recommendation for also an alternative route behind Building C5, I don't think that's feasible. That was just something we wanted to look into, to see if we could send those bikers behind that building, since there's a few curb cuts on those, that small area, but there's really not enough space to do that. So I think going down Adelaide Boulevard is probably where people are naturally going to be drawn to anyways.
If you don't put it there, they'll just walk down the middle of the street.
That as well. And then we also, we did get better clarification on how the boat launch operations will work. We were initially under the impression that the existing boat storage buildings that were there were going to also be used for the rack storage with the daily operations, but those are going to be more seasonal, so we don't see that as big of an issue.
Go ahead.
Well, can we discuss, or do you have the motion?
Got to have a motion.
Oh, never mind. You make your motion, I just want, I want to know.
Well, I had a question, so that's why I was like, do you want me to withhold my question until a motion is on the floor?
No.
Can you address the A11, the questions regarding A11? Because it appears on the map, but it's not in the legend key, so.
The bathrooms.
Yeah, the bathrooms. It's very important.
Yeah, three or four people have asked.
Is that where it notes the bathrooms, but they're not drawn?
No, it's just not in the legend.
Yeah, the legend key does not, the public amenities, the legend key does not identify public restrooms there, and so we just want to make sure that we are.
So it was on the map in previous submittals, it's still on the map marked, but it's no longer on the legend to the side, identifying what that represents.
The sheet notes.
A10 and then A12, missing A11.
So the concern is, did the bathroom go away or not?
I would recommend that that just gets put back into the plan, that the bathrooms are remaining correct.
I'm not sure what bathrooms are. Is that the city? The existing bathrooms?
Yeah. Well, it's not in the same spot as the existing bathrooms now. It looks like A11 is on, has been moved northward on to the peninsula, eastern peninsula.
Oh, I didn't even know that they did that. I mean, the bathrooms don't work right now, they have to be fixed, but they could be there.
There's no plans to move them, though.
Well, that's what I did. It's not a map. The bathrooms are not allowed.
Yeah, this current PUD amendment does not show the bathrooms where they currently exist, instead it shows a parking lot. So my presumption in reading this was that that bathroom facility is being removed, the parking lot's being expanded, and a alternative or new bathroom, public restroom will be added northward on the public peninsula, and so I just wanted to get clarity with regard to that.
Yes.
So what the plan is currently is our community building. I have a lot of people that work for me, and I have no idea what they're doing on a detailed basis. I can only, you know, talk to them at a general high level. The existing bathroom building is defunct, it's broke, it's been down for 10 years, right? I think. So our new community building, which is up by the middle peninsula, it's going to have our Dockmaster, which will allow us to manage both facilities from one brand-new facility. It'll have public safety. It's going to have private laundry facilities for seasonal customers, it'll have private bathrooms, like a concessionary, but it'll also have public restrooms outside that anybody can access. My recommendation is that instead of keeping the existing defunct bathrooms, which are a mess, that the public utilize our public restrooms that we're going to put on the backside of our boat, community building. So, but it can stay if you want, it's just.
What, just so I make sure I'm understanding the same, yeah, where is the community, like what reference?
B3.
B3.
B3, okay, I see it.
That's way up there.
B3 boater.
It's a good spot.
Oh, right there, okay.
Right off the bike path.
Right off the bike path.
Yeah, perfect.
It's a better location for it.
I believe it was initially moved as well, because that was where the boat launch was going to be.
Trying to keep this informal, but please ask to be recognized before you speak. Back, the hearing is closed. It's the only commissioners can ask questions, really, now. Okay, so you're all set.
Question, though, while you're up there. Sheriff, the water unit, is that remaining somewhere here? Is that going to be attached to the boater services building?
Yes, they're going to have.
What's going on with that?
They're going to have the front row looking out over the pool and their vessels.
Pool? Okay.
What pool?
There's a pool in front of B3.
Yeah.
They removed the other one.
I thought that was one you removed.
No, that's the boater services building.
And then one other question. In the previous PUD that we had approved, we amended that to ensure that the privately-owned roads will be publicly accessible. Does that carry over? Is that continuing over? That's, nothing is.
Nothing's being proposed to change with this.
Okay.
There was originally a discussion about it being a private road, but in working with DPW, it could be public. I thought it was their call, it wasn't my call.
But we built it into the last PUD, that it was going to be public, so I remember making that motion, that just, there's no question about it, that it was going to be publicly accessible, not private.
Yes.
Private.
There's, we're also, we also have assembled legal descriptions to make public all the thoroughfares between all the buildings. So there's, you know, connection from public roads to public waterfront spaces, and you wouldn't believe how much it costs to have legal descriptions written up, but it's all there.
Well, thank you for your diligence. It's a lot of work. This is a huge undertaking.
Tell me about it.
Lot of moving pieces and parts, and yeah.
Are you satisfied now?
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Not yet. We don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion.
Are you doing it, Larry?
We're closed.
You want me to do it?
We're closed, we're looking for a motion.
I'll get it.
Okay.
Remember, the staff recommendations have been addressed.
That's the wrong one. You might want to do it, where I lost it.
I will do it then. I would move the request to amend the planned unit development at Adelaide Point, be recommended to the city commission for approval as described.
Support. Moved and supported, is there discussion? Commissioner, does your proposal include close, the ability to close the road for those periods of time for putting boats in?
That wasn't in the PUD before, and they're not requesting it be added now, so it's not.
Yeah, that doesn't apply.
It doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not part of this. All right. Okay. The other discussion. Roll call, please.
Brian Musabe.
Yes.
Phil Montgomery Keys.
Yes.
Larry Spataro.
Yes.
Ken Johnson.
Yes.
Jonathan is gone. Joe Doyle.
Yes.
Tim McCulkey.
No.
Motion passes. So you got both your proposals passed.
You go on to the city.
Going to the city commission.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Pass the planning commission on to the city commission. Okay, now we go to new business.
Oh, someone left their glasses.
Yeah.
On the, I think that might have been Laura. Was that Laura Swanson?
Oh, could have been Laura, yeah. I don't know if I remember.
I'll reach out and get him back, John. Thank you.
Okay, new business, Case 2023-03.
This is a request for a site plan review for a 36,000-square-foot building addition at 2259 Sheridan Road by Pacific Floor Care. This property is located in our industrial park, it's zone I2.
This is a request for a site plan review for a 36,000-square-foot building addition at 2259 Sheridan Road by Pacific Floor Care. This property is located in our industrial park, it's zone I2. It's 11 and 1/2 acres, and the current building measures just under 36,000 square feet. Pass out this, while, while we're waiting for the building to clear.
Take your discussions outside, we're still in a meeting here.
Yeah, we're having a hard time hearing, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the new parking lot that's proposed is approximately 20,000 square foot. A stormwater detention basin is proposed to the north of the new parking lot. Black Creek does run through the western edge of the property, but is over 100 feet away from any development. Approximately 1.6 acres of vegetation will be cleared to make room for the new building, parking lot, and detention basin. And we did get some more comments back from Public Works and the Fire Department. They're basically referring to some questions they have on the stormwater management plan. However, that will be addressed when they apply for their stormwater permits, so it's something they just wanted them to be aware of. It's something that can be worked out further between staff at a later date. Also, there are some concerns from the Fire Department. But again, a lot of those may be able to be alleviated once they have a meeting with the developer, and they can address whether or not the building will be sprinkled, or if there will need to be an access road behind it. It also appears that there does need to be another fire hydrant located nearby. But where exactly, that still needs to be determined, so staff's recommendation that any approval on this would be contingent upon a stormwater permit being issued by the Engineering Department, and updated site plans are approved by the Fire Marshal as necessary.
Commissioner? Yes?
Questions?
Yes.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm good. I'm good. This is very straightforward.
Any questions for staff? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I am. I'd move that the site plan for the building at 2259 South Sheridan be approved with the following condition, that a stormwater permit is received from the Engineering Department, and that the plan is updated and approved by the Fire Marshal as necessary.
Support.
Could we also get a landscaping plan? I forgot to address that.
Yeah.
Support, if you need it.
Any discussion?
Just, I, if I may, I want to just say I, I fully support this, but here's the trade-off. Yes, this is expansion, there's some wooded area that's going to be removed, but I think we're all happier that these manufacturing facilities are in the industrial park instead of on the lakeshore. So that we have the need to have the kind of discussions we spent the first three hours of this meeting discussing, because otherwise this factory would have been there, or something very similar would have been there, because that's what was there when I was a kid. So I'm glad to see that we're seeing growth in areas where it's appropriate.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Jill Montgomery Keys?
Yes.
Larry Spataro?
Yes.
Ken Johnson?
Yes.
Joe Doyle?
Yes.
Brian Mazaeb?
Yes.
Tim Mikowski?
Yes.
Do you have any updates for us?
No updates on previous cases.
I do have a question, though. Larry, you kind of spurred this on, and I know everybody wants to go home. Remember when we were called the, like, the Tree City? We were out planting all these trees and all the development that's going on out there on Sherman and all that noise, and talking about this property. What happened to the Tree City? Are we still a Tree City?
Still have the Arbor City designation.
Wait, I do not believe we have that.
No, we do. They just had me sign it again.
Oh, they did? Oh, so we're back in.
Because we need some new trees on our street, so I'll be calling over to DPW to get those, but you know, that's really important, people to know, we need trees.
Any property owner can request a tree be planted for their terrace, and we will plant a tree in front of your house or on your property on your terrace. I don't know about that. If it's dead or dying, we're not just going to arbitrarily remove trees because you don't like it. But if there's a dead or dying tree, yes. But any, any resident property owner can contact the City Forest Department, ask for a tree to be planted in their terrace, yes.
Very cool.
Mike, I do have one question. On the New Kirk expansion on Laketon, okay, part of that proposal was a berm
Yes.
across Laketon. They had the berm during construction. Now, the berm is about maybe a foot, two feet at most, almost ground level. Are they planning to put additional trees in there or put the berm back or?
I will have to check on that. The last I saw, I noticed it being very high still, so.
Yeah, it's gone.
Okay.
It's totally gone.
They may be re-sculpting that.
They were supposed to do landscaping, I'm just wondering at what height.
Yeah, we had a very extensive plan on the berm, and then also whether we're going to place the trees on top of it or in front of it. I think we decided on in front of it, so.
And when they first went into construction, they had at least an eight-to-10-foot berm that blocked all that stuff.
I think we agreed upon a smaller one, but I'll, I'll have to check on that.
We didn't even call them up.
Let's check it out.
Mike, that, excuse me, that, that lot, that vacant lot that's on Laketon, just off of Getty, butter block off of Getty, that we've had the problem with cars parking, you know, a bunch, storing.
We actually had our enforcement agent go out there this week, so we are working on that car repair place with all the parking on the grass. Yeah, we're, we're out working on that one again.
Okay.
There's that place over on Getty too, further down, where we discussed that business, putting up a fence, I drove down there.
It's much better now. The one on Evanston?
Yeah, it's better now, because I just went through, like, oh, it's still bad.
They were going to move the semi, remember, and.
Yeah, that's, that's all gone. It's packed in there, but they've been legally parked, as far as we can see.
Okay, good. Because that was bad.
Is that it? We are adjourned.
And congratulations on your chairmanship for next year, on your election.
My life.
Oh, no, 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 you're not going to.